You're a wonderful thing, Todd. If it weren't for the narrow streets in Norbert, many of us would be dead now.
That's true, that's true. Welcome all to meeting. If the equipment is working, we can call the meeting to order. Hello, Heidi. Heidi, I just offered my excuse.
For being with me.
Yeah. So we have a busy meeting tonight. This December meeting of the Norbert Planning Commission. We have the development proposal to discuss. And we have a couple of potential zoning issues to discuss as well. Does everyone here have an agenda? Or anyone with an agenda if it's in the audience? Do you all have an agenda? Okay. All right. Left the record to show that we have all planning commissioners here, except Jennifer Giorgio, who will not be attending because of the conflict in her schedule. So that means Jennifer, I'm going to designate you as a sitting member of the planning commission this evening. So live it up. Tonight, I'd like to begin with the chair's update. And the first update, I hope you'll indulge me for a minute in the audience. This is a month of transition for us. We have two departing planning commissioners and a semi departing planning consultant. So first, I'll acknowledge Michael Gaudini, sitting planning commission member, who will be resigning from the commission after this meeting, to take on the important duties of being a brown council member. So our losses there being, I have to say. Michael has, in the short time he's been in, returned to Norbert and been on the commission, he's proven to be a great kind of zoning analyst and policy analyst. And I think those skills will serve Norbert well from the council. I also think that Michael has, because he was born and raised here in Norbert, has brought a lot of insight to us, who were not born and raised here in Norbert, about what this borough is like, what it's been like, what some of the neighborhoods are like, and how we're going to think about them when we're considering planning policies. So we appreciate that very much. And if you've been around the planning commission long enough, you know. When somebody leaves, I give them a gift. This is a favorite because it's snagged from my personal bookshelf. And I'm giving you this book, Good City Form.
Oh, awesome.
Because it is the most, it is the least
This is hefty.
data analytic book that I can think of that is important. So to balance out all of your spreadsheet analysis, here's a theoretical book about what makes cities good. And the good news is it's already pre highlighted. This is my bible in graduate school. And I think I had to pick a book off my bookshelf if I'm thinking of it. So I hope this serves you well as a brown council member and gives you the wisdom you'll need to help us prosper. Okay, I'll expect to report. Unfortunately, Jennifer is not here. I will offer her a gift too. She has been a stalwart in advocating for green building policies and sustainability policies and has been a liaison to the environmental advisory committee to us as well, to sort of bridge conversations. And that has been extremely, extremely valuable as well. I'll be sending her a gift and I'll let her tell you what it is with the gift. Chloe, the author of our comprehensive plan in Norbert. Weren't you?
No.
No, I'm sorry. I take that back. I thought you remembered when we passed that.
I assisted Maggie that little bit.
Okay, Maggie's right.
I was here for so much of the public outreach event, which is when I initially met some people. And I actually had a long conversation that day about 2012.
Well, you're the keeper of the plate. Can we say that? Chloe has helped us navigate policy issues, big and small. Huge issues of how to approach land use to small issues about what is the definition of store. And we
Historic district rules.
That's right. Yes, that's true. You let us know back.
It's a loss of that.
So Chloe's leadership has been really critical in the drafting of a lot of the important codes that we've been working on over the last few years. And we've come to rely on your wisdom and your insight for the borough. So we appreciate all you've done. We're glad to know you're still being working for Montgomery County. We'll be able to be a resource to Tim and others as this time is. So thank you for you. I have a book, How to Study Public Life. Because this is about the people side of all the policies. We talk about what store should there be when having a developer. But this is a book about methodologies for studying public life. I hope you don't have it.
I don't have it. I'm fully or certainly with one of the authors.
Yeah, I'm Del.
Thank you so much.
So it's a book about methodology. It's about his history of work from, you know, starting in Copenhagen in the seventies. So I hope it's valuable to you.
I appreciate that.
Sure. Okay, so now we get into our business. The only update I have is that we do not have 2:30 Haverford on the agenda tonight. I think a lot of people expected that. The reason for that is because a revised application was submitted, oh, what, about two weeks earlier or so? And the revision really consisted of the inclusion of lots of stormwater data. It was felt that the borough staff needed more time to review it and issue comments. And it wouldn't really be productive to have that on our agenda tonight. So that will be on our agenda on January. What's it January for? It'll be on our agenda on January 3rd. So that's the only update I have. I would like to move on then to approval of the minutes from November, which we circulated not long ago. Thank you, Michael, for putting this together. Does anybody have any comments, questions, or corrections to offer to the minutes as submitted by Michael? Yeah? Okay, may I have a motion then to approve the minutes as presented?
Some more?
I am moved, is there a second to approve the minutes?
Second.
Adam seconds. Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes as presented? Are any opposed? Okay, duly ordered. We will submit them to the borough office to be put on the borough's webpage. The last matter of business is, last month I circulated a outline of a list of potential meeting dates for next month. I asked you all to look at your calendars and see if you had any conflicts so that you could adjust if necessary. Is anyone any concerned about the proposed calendar for next year?
Not yet.
Not yet. Designed a chance for a conflict to creep up, whatever it is. Hearing no objection, I will submit those dates then to the borough office so they can be added to our calendar and advertised. I did, at the last meeting, raise the prospect of possibly having a special meeting in January in case our workload in January is too. We have too much of a workload to handle what we need to in the meeting. I think that what we'll do in that case is we'll just wait till January. And if we have to have a special meeting, we'll choose that date then. But be aware, it's possible in the second half of January, we might have to have a second meeting to handle the agenda items that we have. And that's all I have for announcements and objections. So let us move on then to the first. Well, let me explain to the public here, because some people are new to our meeting. We first hear land development and subdivision applications. So welcome to our meeting tonight. And it's good to see you again, Chris. And what we would like is for your team to make presentations about your projects. There'll be discussion among the planning commissioners. If there are members of the public who are here tonight or in the meeting virtually who would like to ask questions or make comments about the proposal, then we want you to hand those comments. And then the planning commission will have a discussion about what actions, if any, we would like to take. As a heads up, what I anticipate tonight is that we will focus our discussion on any recommendations we'd like to make the council for its conditional use hearing later this month. I don't anticipate that we would make a recommendation to approve or disapprove or anything of that nature, because we would want to wait for the conditional use hearing. And because the borough engineer has raised questions about things that he would like to see addressed to the plans, and we would want to make sure those are addressed to the borough issues. So I don't think tonight is the night to make a recommendation for a final approval. But I think if there are recommendations the commissioners would like to make to council to consider in its conditional use hearing, that would be what we could focus on tonight. We only received the zoning officer's letter at 5:18 PM, even though it was submitted, I think, to you guys on November 30th. We only received it. And so I've already had a little back and forth with Kevin. There are some zoning questions the commission has, and we'd prefer not to discuss them until we get some clarification from Kevin. And if there are zoning issues to discuss, we can discuss them at the next meeting. You know, an hour and a half to review the letter and process comments is not adequate time for us to do. So that's the scenario for tonight. Then after the land development subdivision, there are a couple of potential zoning issues to discuss. And again, we will start with discussion among commissioners and then invite the public to comment and join the discussion as well before we determine what actions or recommendations, if any, the commission will take on those matters. So we'll appreciate your patience, those who've come for that agenda item as we work through the subdivision item first. We always take those first if we have them on our agenda. So any questions about the agenda, the order of operations in the meeting tonight? I'm sorry, I didn't ask you to have any reports from MCPC. Let me take a step back. Any updates from you?
At this time, the survey for the active transportation plan is, in a way, we have over 300 responses so far. A lot of them coming from Norbert Zico. So and a lot of comments related to Norbert and surrounding areas around Norbert. So there's a strong participation coming from the boroughs.
When is that?
That closes three months after the plan. So that will be closing towards the end of January, beginning of February.
Okay.
So it's a good amount of time.
If you're listening on the internet, there's still time to take that active transportation survey. How can people find it?
I just need to get the officially. It's through Laura Marion's website. They've been kind enough to host it for us.
We, Norbert is a firewall. We can't access it. Okay, well, you all.
Provided with notes and you can go on for minutes.
Okay, that'll be all right. Do you would like a hard copy of the proposal that we discussed? I have. There's one packet. Yeah, there's one set is the, it's just something differently developed. And one set is the architectural. You work on this one?
I don't work there.
Okay, so welcome to you again. The floor is yours for your team to discuss your proposal. And I confess, I'm not sure I know exactly how to pronounce your name. So would you mind introducing yourself?
Hi. Oh, hi. I'm Kwasi Koke. So I'm the dentist. Me and my wife were both dentists. We are currently working, we have the office in Essex Dental in Essex Avenue.
My family is an extensive relationship.
So we've been working there for about seven years. And it's been, the place has been a little, it's not enough for us to provide the care. So we're thinking to expand our office. And so we got this office in 2021, in about three years. So we're thinking to, it's a multi-family building. So we're thinking to, if we can get the permit, we want to use the first floor for our dental office. We're thinking to put an addition to. And also trying to apply for the, for the conditional use. Hopefully this can work.
Okay, and I know you're with Chris. And sir, could you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, I'm Xin Yuan Chen. You can call me Xin. I'm an architect hired by my client. Yeah, so it's my pleasure to work with Kevin. I think we, I meet with Jim and before the meeting, I meet with historical committee, Dennis. Yeah, so we have kind of back and forth in terms of during the progress design. And so that's what our current scheme right now. So just give you some background story. Originally, we had present addition in the front and the side. But after discussing with Jim and Dennis, they suggest, and I think that's a very good suggestion. So basically, we do the extension at the current garage and parking location and kind of do the two-story addition with the one-story connection. So give the historical building kind of just a given self-study alone with kind of use of connection to try to feature the historical building. So based on, I have, I can present on the drawing, that'll be easier for everyone.
Okay. Would you, let me ask this, but I'm not sure we can do it. Would you like us to show the drawings up on the screen?
Yes.
That'd be a great view.
Yes.
Okay. Adam, are you the person who's
Do you have a thumb drive? Yeah.
We are, okay.
I'll just log in. Otherwise, I have to download the email.
I actually have them saved. Well, I'm waiting for that.
Or I guess I could do it. Just one second. Would it be easier, Adam, if Chloe shared her screen? If you just gave, or you give permission for her to share her screen?
I can do that.
Hold on, I'm not actually in Zooms.
Well, I'm in the meeting, so maybe I
Okay.
Okay.
Adam will do it.
Go ahead.
What was your question?
I was just going to say, could you explain what the conditional use is for? Why do we need it?
Is Kevin on the meeting? I can't tell. Kevin?
Explain why conditional use process is required here?
Sure, so essentially, the project, as they just mentioned, is an existing three-unit multi-family dwelling where adding this medical office or dental office on the first floor, it now creates a mixed-use building. And the mixed-use building in the byright, while the individual uses are permitted byright, by creating a mixed-use building, there is a footnote numbered one, and that requires the conditional use approval for this progress, project, sorry.
Kevin, that is really to the rules we wrote for properties along Windsor Avenue, correct?
Yeah, Windsor Downtown 5A District. I think it's Windsor Forest and I believe Essex Corner Properties.
Right, so Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but you'll remember Heidi, a few years back, we passed special rules for four-story apartment and mixed-use buildings on Windsor Avenue. In the way that, in the 5A District, that side of that street. And the way that is written, any apartment or any mixed-use building, no matter how tall, requires a conditional use permit. We can debate whether that was good code writing or not, but it's pretty clear that's what the code says. And so that is why a conditional use process is required.
Thanks.
Okay, so are we
I don't, they won't let me.
Okay. Chloe will join the meeting and share her screen.
Well, it won't let me let people share screens. How do I?
Can you, okay, so you need it on your screen. Okay, so do you have it on a thumb drive?
I guess I get to.
Okay, so maybe you can just run it on your
All right. I also have a paper copy of this.
Oh, why?
We have it. I have a paper copy of this.
Okay, yeah, we have a bunch of them here. If we put it on the screen, then we'd probably pencil it too, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, through the meeting, if I share the screen, if it lets me to that. Where's the, just where's the So you wanted to open which file?
Yeah, both files. So Chris will.
Okay. All right.
Good evening. My name is Chris Yonner. I'm the civil engineer for the project. If you don't mind sticking to sheet three.
The list dropping is weird.
Thank you. This, this is the existing conditions plan. And so it's zoomed up so you can see some of the properties around it. It's okay on the near screen. So this is North Essex Avenue going left to right along the street. And this is Windsor going up and down. And so here's the existing building. There's a porch on the back of the building. A detached garage and some driveways that will all be removed. They're shown in red. This area up here, which is flank, is the elm building that was built just a few years ago. And it's the intersection of Windsor and Forest. Just to get directions, that's where we are. If you don't mind skipping back to the first sheet. Thank you. And so as Mr. Chen said, the original design, which was shown to me almost a year ago, showed an addition in the front of the building here off of North Essex and enclosure back here to square off the building facing Windsor. They took that to heart and presented it. And after discussions with heart, the recommendation was maintain as much of the existing building as you could and see if you could do an addition off the back. And so part of the reason I mentioned is it also affects the parking. When the addition was in the front here and an addition here to square up the building, the parking was able to go all the way to the very property line. And so now that we have an addition, which we have all the way to the property line and extend it linearly, you can see it's in a rectangular shape. It pushes the parking a little bit closer to the street. Now, it is in the second lot later as permitted, but it does push a little closer to the street. And so we do have the review letter. And that's a quick overview. I guess if you don't mind searching to sheet four. Thank you. And so just some of the other things. So this is the addition in brown. These are walkways in the tan color. The new parking area is shown in gray. And so there's three parking spaces there, a hatched area for ADA device. These green are new street trees. There are no street trees there right now. And these dark dash lines are ringwater piping that comes down from the building and also a yard drain off to the side here, which piped together to an underground stormwater management system, which is sized for the increased impervious coverage, which is only about 800 square feet. So it's not a very big system. We did do an infiltration test to prove that there was infiltration. And that, you can see it's four inches per hour, which is pretty good. So that is, that system is basically going to infiltrate the design storm. And so that's a quick overview of the site. There's not a lot of site improvements here in comparison to some other projects. Not a lot of site grading. We do have the review letter from the borough engineer, which I'm happy to go over either comment by comment or just some of the ones that we'd like to talk about. We actually did not receive a copy of the zoning officer's review letter. So we have not. We did originally submit architectural plans. I know you discussed with Chloe over the summer a few times.
Yes.
We made some changes to where setbacks were in the building. And we thought that we were, we didn't have any issues other than the conditional use. So, you know, we're happy to look at those and see how we can resolve them. We haven't seen that yet.
Okay. Before we proceed, Kevin, do you know if that letter was missing? You addressed the letter to Matt West? Do you know if it was sent to the applicant? Or are you sort of having it on hold before you send it?
Yeah, so I guess last Thursday, when I originally drafted it, you know, my comment letter as written kind of said it was compliant. And then a couple of questions were raised on Friday morning. So I held off on the letter, was intended on writing it, releasing it Saturday. And then we brought up more items for discussion today. So I held off on releasing that because my comment letter may or may not be correct based on, you know, the discussions that we'll have after this meeting. And Chris, I'll let you know the second we get rid of those comments.
Okay, thank you. So I apologize for misspeaking, Kevin. I didn't realize, I thought I had said something. Okay, so before we, before we get to Eric's comments, was there anything else you wanted to present at this point or can we?
Nothing else from me. We do have a full set of architectural plans and the architect is here. We could either get through the site stuff and move to that, or we could do the rest of the presentation with the architectural and then go to the comments, whatever you'd like to do.
Well, I guess I'd like to ask planning commissioners, do any of you have any comments about the scope of the project, the nature of the project, what's intended here, what's being proposed? Do you have any questions about any of the, you know, the metrics like parking or impervious coverage or impervious or anything like that?
Would it be possible to reserve comment until after we see the architecture?
Is that
To reserve comment until after we see the architectural presentation or?
Well, yeah, I think at this point, just any questions for clarifications to help our understanding of the project. And then we can discuss it. Then we can ask for the architectural drawings. If you have any questions about it.
Yeah, I just had a quick, the medical office, how much, how much square footage is the medical office, please?
Okay. So for the first floor, including the extension, that'll be around 1,900 square feet. Yeah.
And the only reason I was asking was because the, and it may be that y'all want the three parking spaces in one case. But if, the only reason I was asking is because they, you get the exemption from, I think, the first 2,500 square feet for office. And it looked like, you know, you had factored in having a requirement to potentially get down to two parking spaces if you wanted fewer than three, but you may want three. I just, I wasn't sure if that was something that y'all had considered. The only reason I was asking was just from a pedestrian perspective, the width of the driveways, it's a pretty wide kind of curb cut. And if you didn't want that additional parking, you know, wasn't, it's an option. If you didn't actually want the third space to narrow that down, but you may want it for business purposes or whatnot. So that's not, that's not like a, you know, completely advised or thinking on it. It's just if it wasn't something that you had considered, I just wanted to put that out there.
I actually might be able to answer that question better for you. So the parking regulations are a little bit different for medical offices specifically in that the requirements aren't based off of square footage. They're based off consultant rooms. So they actually needed that, the four spaces, I'm sorry, the three spaces. And that does use the shared parking ratios.
So none of the exemptions and the exemption one that speak to office and like in general terms would apply to that?
Yeah, they did use the exception for having one dwelling unit is exempt from parking. So they only need one for the two dwelling units. And then they have the ratio of 1.5 for the shared parking ratio, which they did use. So realistically, they were required to have six spaces in total. And then using exemptions, they get down to three.
Yeah. Well, maybe we should forget providing exemptions some point in future.
I have a question, if no one else does. On the plan that's on the screen, in the upper right-hand corner of the site, just above the proposed addition and to the right of the parking spaces, it's gray. And I'm wondering, is that impervious surface? And what's the purpose? Is there a functional purpose for that?
No. Are you talking about, sorry.
Sure.
Are you talking about this area?
Yes.
Uh, no. Because, oh, sorry. Because this, this will be Because, oh, sorry, because this, this will be the trash room? In the plan, on the first floor.
Right.
So somehow, we, we provide more space in order to access.
So that would be for accessing, like kind of?
Right.
The storage, you know, the trash utility.
And then we, we also have the side door over here.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, okay. That's, so any other kind of informational questions?
Yes, yeah, I have two questions. First, is that trash room for just the office or for the residential units too?
Uh, fully, what? Uh, can, can we go to the plan, maybe architecturally? Yeah.
Is that in the same drawings that?
Uh, no, sorry, different file. So basically, this is a trash area. Over here, trash, trash room covered here. So, uh, the apartment, we have the two apartments, so basically second floor is another apartment, third floor is a, another apartment. So, uh, we have not discussed, to be honest, we have not discussed the, the trash area will be for the, uh, my client's office only or the residential altogether, so we, we will discuss that. Yes.
Yeah, I had one other. Are we losing any street spaces because of the curb cut?
Oh, no, uh, answer to the, uh, question to the curb cut, we keep the, the current curb cut.
Is it, that's the existing?
Yeah, that's the curb cut. Uh, but I, I believe there's one comment saying, because the two-way parking, I think the comment from a engineer, they request, the curb is twenty-one and they request to be twenty-two. So. Yeah.
That was one of Eric's comments, so.
That, that's the code is for two, for a driveway is twenty-two feet.
Yeah.
They have twenty-one. Uh, but that's with the impact of long street parking, we're not going to lose any parking, because even if we're just shifting line painting, there's, there's, there's a buffer on that road, so.
Okay. Um, any other question? Okay, so if there are other questions, just informationally about, about the, about, about the site planning and zoning, then please do show us the architectural drawings.
Uh, okay.
So while we're calling, I'm sorry, I should say something else about that. Just for the people in the planning commission and people who are watching, the, this application is for, um, a preliminary and final land use approval. Normally in a preliminary plan, we aren't looking at architectural drawings, but in a final plan, architectural drawings are required to be submitted. So that's, that's why we're looking at those tonight, because we're being asked ultimately to make those approvals simultaneously. So, um, um, and, and I know, is Dennis on the, on the, in the main, Dennis Martin, see, watching the meeting? Is he online?
Yes, yes, I am. Yeah, I was at another meeting, I just actually just joined about five, five minutes ago.
Okay, so Dennis, after we hear about the architectural presentation, if it's okay with you, I'd like to ask you to talk about the HARP's discussion about this.
Oh, sure, oh, absolutely, yeah, that, that's fine.
Okay. So that's just a little context, everyone, I'm sorry to interrupt you, please go ahead.
No, no worries. Uh, sorry. Can we go to the first page? So first page, just the, the current existing condition, so, uh, we know this is a three-story building here, this is the current building and with the garage, and the current curb cut we're talking about, and the driveway. And, so this is the current curb cut here. So, uh, next. So, so this plan, uh, so the gray highlight area that is the current building footprint. So we use the current porch area to do the medical office reception, and use the one-story, we call connection, and connect to the new addition in the back. And new addition, uh, they are two-story, so you can see right here. And we try to make, uh, lower than the current existing building, try to, uh, respect the, the historical building. Um, in terms of, I'm not sure you would, um, need to discuss the, kind of like a, a style of the addition. So we try to make more like a modern look, try to kind of disprove the historical. And so that, that's the, the concept of the design. So, uh, the, uh, the last page, I will have the rendering to show to everyone. So, uh, we can go to. Yeah, sorry. Uh, so basically, uh, sorry, yes, the first floor. So the addition will be the dental office, that would not be the consult, consult room, and just, just there for their personal use. Uh, they take a break or, or take a lunch over there. So, for the public, it's all on the existing and addition, uh, existing building side. Oh, uh, the main entry of the, the dental office will be the new double block door. They go through the, the idea parking space with a pathway, or the, the pathway from the sidewalk. And for the apartment above, they will still use the current residential stair in the front. So, so we separate the, uh, the dental office, use entry and also the apartment residential entrance. And, thank you. So basically this is a, that is large first floor plan, and also the, the center, center just will be the existing to be used. And we can go to the, the upper floor. So on that side is the, the second floor, so that's the, the first unit on the second floor, and also the second floor addition and for office. And third floor will be another apartment. Yes, next to this. And this just showing the, the building, the addition relationship with the, the existing building. And last page. So basically this is the, uh, the rendering, uh, show, show, uh, in, in our mind and what future will look like, so.
Does anyone in the planning commission have any questions about the architectural design? We'll hold off on comments, just let, just sort of, let's make sure we have a full understanding of this.
Yeah, I, I, this, this stair to the residential units, is that a new stair?
Uh, no, the current, uh, is existing, to the residential, they are existing. To the dental office, they are new. So on the last rendering, the photo here, they are existing.
Alright, so the new construction is not proshaped, and the existing construction is proshaped, okay, got it.
Any questions?
No question.
Okay. Alright, so, um, thank you for that, we do have a review letter from the, uh, Borough Engineer. And so I've got this my pen here, on the call, who can report to us about the, the HARP's discussions about this project. And although MCPC has not issued a letter formally yet, they do, they, they can, uh, Tim Stubb can discuss the comments they're working on. So what I'll do is sort of, is, is ask for those comments, and then after we discuss this, and if there's any conversation among the planning commission, we can, we can do that. So let's start with Eric, the Borough Engineer. Would you mind, um, you, uh, you do your letter, and then we can ask what responses the, the house to that? Thank you.
Many of the items in the letter are just for fun through information for, to be added to the plan or to be corrected, but I guess there's a few items that maybe could warrant a discussion or clarification, which is correct here. The first, just a general, kind of connects to the, the renderings, and is required to provide informational building materials to be used on the building. So that's one, uh, the other one is related to parking lot, I know we discussed, there's the wish of the driveway is currently twenty-one feet. Uh, the official requirement in the SALO is make it twenty-two feet. So that would either need to be widened by a foot, otherwise relief granted for that, a waiver granted for the driveway width. The other item would be the presence of bike parking on the site. And then the circulation, make sure vehicles can maneuver back out of the various parking spaces in the parking lot. But then really, the only other item that's, uh, we really require some consideration of the plan is, has to do with the sidewalks along the frontage. I believe the sidewalks along Windsor are currently four feet wide, and Essex are currently six feet wide, whereas the code is required for eight-foot sidewalk, uh, which would be, if you want, for a comparison, if you were to keep going up Windsor towards the Elm 114th Forest, apartment building that widens out to eight feet, and then it comes back down to the, the four foot part of this property. Um, other than that, just some, the rest of the letters, just some basic clarification to the motor plan. Uh, there is one comment on that concrete pad in the rear, where I think we were kind of discussing what's the intention of it. It just, I, I was pointing out, it just doesn't have a pitch towards the, the fighting property line, uh, which can, can be corrected with a, with adjustments of the, of the plan. So that's the items that I would, that I think we could discuss, or if you have a response.
Do you have any concerns about any of those comments?
Just a few. So comment four H says about all proposed site lighting, and so we did speak about site lighting, and the staff's office will be open until five o'clock, and so they didn't feel there was any need for any site lighting, that's why we didn't propose any. There will be, you know, some lights by the door, you know, typically. But no, no larger lights on poles. In terms of dedication of recreational area, which is number five, I didn't have a chance to call and ask about that. This is a little interesting, there's already a few apartments there, and so there's no increase to the number of apartments, it's just the added office space. I think that's, and we can talk about offline, exactly how that.
Uh, yeah, I believe the, I, I would, I would phrase that you could probably come up with a conclusion to the satisfaction solicitor. Uh, there's various ways you can comply with that section, but it, it's pretty de minimis for the property.
Okay, thank you. Number six is about the traffic, or the, the width of the driveway. And so, we obviously can comply with twenty-two feet, there's nothing prohibiting us from doing that. Question is, is it worth it to disturb the driveway to get it one foot wider if there's only three cars? And so, my question is, would that be something that the, the commission would entertain waiver or not? I don't have a hardship, I wouldn't get a bearings board, but it is something in the SALO that you can get a waiver for if it's not corporate. Number nine is the one that has to do with particular curving templates, and so we will provide those, and we'll do the best that we can. I have my gouts that we're going to be able to turn around completely on the site without backing up, at least onto the sidewalk to turn around a little bit. And that was a little bit why I made the point earlier of how the original additions to the building were shown on Essex, and to cut off a corner so that parking could go all the way to the rear property line, because the addition was reconfigured to keep the historic building intact, that limited where parking could be. So we don't know if that is also something that we would entertain a waiver on, that's number nine. And those were really the only, the only ones that weren't straightforward that everything else will address.
Okay. I'm, I'm wondering, uh, if you could restate and clarify, because I, I was trying to understand, but didn't fully understand what the waiver would be in number nine.
I'm just, the code provision says all dead-end parking drive aisles in off-street parking lots shall be designed to provide a sufficient backup area for the end stalls. That what you're referring to, Eric?
Uh, basically, yeah, so that, if you're pulling into this parking space, can a vehicle make the maneuver to turn and come back out?
Uh, without backing out onto Windsor Avenue in order to make the turn.
Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, so given the configuration, I'm concerned that they might have to back out onto Windsor Avenue in order to make the turn.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's why I gave you the book. I guess it's a simple little bit, usually you can help us track down, as well as being the big picture thinker here. Okay. Um, while we're at it, were there any other waivers or relief that you were seeking? I could, I, I tried real hard to look for this stuff on these drawings, couldn't find it.
The ten that I'm aware of, typically we would put those on the record plan, next general notes and.
Okay, but the other one, as you mentioned, the preliminary final submission of the plan.
Right. Okay. Okay, um, let's move then to, um, MCPC. Would you care to give us your comments, completely formally, understanding the affect, as I've been seeing them or reviewing them?
Uh, so our initial comments are, it is consistent with, uh, MCPC's, uh, twenty-four year comprehensive plan. Um, it fits within the town center area or future land use area of the MAC, where it's a traditional downtown with mixed-use or retail, built institutional office and residential spaces. Pedestrian-oriented buildings and built relatively close to the sidewalk. And so it is consistent with Monaco twenty-four. Um, and then it is also consistent with the Narber twenty-fourty comprehensive plan, um, where it is in the downtown transition. This area is intended to encourage the preservation of existing residential land uses and building types. Um, it is encourages, it is encouraged that non-residential uses are permitted due to their proximity to, of the downtown, but also we're trying to preserve existing building architecture, which we believe this plan does, which this plan seems to match that up significantly. Additionally, we, we discussed a bit about the recreation land dedication, which the engineer being brought up. Uh, one item that we did notice on one of the plans is that on some of the drawings, a fire escape is, um, getting removed and others, it's not.
Uh, yes, it does remove, because we are going to put a sprinkler system.
Oh, I know, but I think one of the, one of the plans, like after, I, I need to go through.
It's not showing Chris on your demolition plan.
Okay.
That's why we're moving.
Oh, okay.
Um, so that was one of the items, um, since the underground basin will be getting, our environmental team commented that, since the underground basin will be getting a fair amount of runoff, uh, just make sure it is well maintained. Um, and then the last item that we wanted to bring up is more related to the form-based code. And this is just kind of, so the form, at least the way we're looking at this, it is not a mixed-use building type or a apartment building type, but rather a resident, a multifamily or multifamily resident building type. And we're just interested to know how the borough wants to proceed with that, considering what we discussed in the comprehensive plan, or considering what's discussed in the comprehensive, this is preserving it, um, it's preserving that residential use, but it is also conflicting with the way the building type is laid out. Uh, one of the things that we did identify is that for, before a district has a similar, has, where these, this use is permitted as a condition. Uh, one of the things that we did identify is that for, before a district has a similar, has where these, this use is permitted as a conditional use within any building type, um, but that is not what exists in five A. So, but yeah, that's our comments.
Because I'm slow and it took me a little while to understand that Tim's comment that he just made when he made it to me the other day. The, the mixed-use building type is really specifically described in the code with like window zone and the ratio of windows to each other thing. The features and all kinds of things for a mixed-use building. And this building is not in compliance with those. So you're allowed to have these uses in a mixed-use building, but just because, because you put these uses in the same building, it doesn't make it a mixed-use building according to the code. So that's just a, something to consider how you want to deal with that or not.
Okay. Yeah, we're, we're interested in seeing how the borough, like I said, must proceed and work with the applicant. Um, whether it be variance, whether it be possibly seeking now a zoning change to allow the us that are in for a, as under any building type in the five A, in a similar situation to encourage, uh, historic perfection, additional historic protection. So.
Well, if nothing else, this application has pointed out, there are a lot of quirks and gaps and holes and ambiguities in the code related to this. But in regard to your particular question about the facade features or mixed-use building, Kevin and I did have a little discussion about that today. Kevin, you have, I, uh, you, you did respond to me about that question today. Would you mind, um, sharing what your response was to that?
Sure. Let me pull up the email. All right. So I'm going to go verbatim from my email and paraphrase where necessary. Um, so ba- basically I said the existing North Essex Avenue facade isn't being touched. Um, and actually kind of go against the Harb COA approval to change the front facade of a historic resource. Um, in the code, I actually have as the zoning officer, the ability to accept, it says other features that satisfy the intent of the standards in subsections six through eleven, which are some of the actual specific design standards for mixed-use buildings. Um, and then items one through three have to do with the, uh, actual uses. Uh, so getting back to what Chloe just said, there's really only two points that would apply, which in regards to, uh, fenestration and window heights. I think we might be able to play with them. The problem is that might actually trigger some issues with Harb there. But my, my take now, I mean, I think we need a little bit more discussion offline after this is, but I think that we have an existing facade that's not being touched. Do we want to require these design changes for the different building types when the applicant isn't intending on changing those facades? This actually triggers another issue that we'll discuss further in terms of setbacks. Do we want to change existing building facades to meet these design standards? If so, will we need variances or will we like to change the code? That's, that's something we need to discuss a little bit more.
Okay. So the, one of the key things Kevin said is there, in, in that part of the code that, that relates to the, to the facade characteristics of mixed-use buildings, zoning, there, there is discretion provided as to the features. And so I think that's what Kevin, Kevin was referring to there. But, um, there are, there are other issues that really have to do just with the fact that our code was built in many steps over many times. It had added up to complications that are really, um, um, things that we ought to be looking at, just as you're, as you're suggesting. So if you would like, um, um, we can include you in those, all those conversations, you know, with Kevin's, as we try to understand how Kevin's approaching this. Cause it's super complicated. It's like every time we ask a question, there's like another section of the code that we have to look at. So.
Just as a brief suggestion, having worked on rewriting to non-performing issues, parts of other people's, other municipalities code, you could cover a lot of things, but some look at that, you know, like allowing, allowing various things of, 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 of existing building. It may not be as complicated.
Well, the problems are complicated.
Yeah, yeah.
Hopefully their answers are.
There might be a.
That is, that is, that is down the road. Maybe we can talk about that a little later in the meeting. But for the purposes of this application right now, I think, I think the zoning officer is looking at that provision as a way of addressing the question. Okay. Was that all of your comments?
Uh, that's all the major ones.
Okay. Thank you. So, um, you'll be receiving the letter. And in case you're not, are you familiar with the M C P C and the process, its role in this process? So M C P C, we swing this around as if everyone knows, Montgomery County Planning Commission. Um, the Montgomery County Planning Commission is, uh, I guess it's statute only required to provide a review of any land use action or development approval with the borough undertakes. So the minute your plans come into our office, it gets sent to their office and they just perform a review to make sure, in their opinion, it's consistent with the plans and codes as well. So sort of an independent third-party review. And this, this, um, we wanted to calendar this quickly, but what that means is we don't have all the letters and things in place. And so, um, you'll receive that letter. Um, uh, I think you have thirty days.
So the twenty-first, I believe, at the latest.
Is your deadline?
It's there.
Okay. Um, so that's, that's why those comments came in. So finally, um, Dennis, if you're still with us, can you give us a background, uh, on the Harb, the discussions the Harb has had about this project?
Yeah, sure. Happy, happy to do that.
Thank you.
This is a, a project where actually the applicants approached us through, through Kevin, uh, very early on in, in the design process. So we actually saw schematics and got an initial view of what they were planning. So we had a chance to have conversations and, and work with them very early on. Um, I don't, I don't know whether or not there was, this was prefaced, uh, in, in the earlier discussion, but you know, initially there was going, the, the proposal was for an addition that would come out from the, from the front of the building, uh, the Essex side, very similar to another sort of nineteen-sixties addition for a medical, uh, facility, a couple of doors down, uh, more toward the center of town. Uh, there, there was going to be addition there. There's also going to be an addition that would have filled in that L-shaped space along Windsor with that little sort of nook where the, where the, uh, you know, there was, I mean, another part of the addition there. So with that, with being able to talk with the applicant early on, we were able to have a discussion and, and suggest that they, you know, sort of rethink the addition. They had, because they had space to be able to work, uh, in the, in the back of the building, that they could look, look to that as a potential space. We talked a little bit about, um, this, the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, which is the guiding principles that we use. And it's basically used nationally, uh, for evaluating historic preservation rehabilitation projects. So the, the borough at the beginning of our work, uh, we've, we've only been in existence for about two years, but, uh, at the beginning of our work, they, the Borough Council voted to accept the Secretary Standards as our guiding, guiding principles. And specifically with, with additions, uh, you know, we're looking at their standards nine and 10 really talk about additions and they advocate that, um, additions be scaled properly, that they be scaled so that they're, they're, um, much smaller than the building that they're being added to. And that if, when at all possible, if it, if they could be separated from the main body of the building, the, the idea being that if at some point the addition were to be removed, would your historic building be largely in intact and sort of still be that building that it was his historically? So, um, in bo- and in both of those, with, with those discussions, they really came forth with a design that I think does that perfectly. In fact, I, I kind of see this as, as a sort of a model of what an addition for this kind of building can be. It's a little, little tricky because you're dealing with a corner building with, uh, a lot of, a lot of viewpoints. Um, and it's also within our context in Narberth, it's, it's a very important building in that it's, it's very early. It dates to, to the initial year, uh, of, of the borough's founding. Uh, it's also kind of remarkable in that it survived with its original finishes. Uh, it, it has its original siding. Uh, it has some of its original windows, believe it or not, from the eighteen nineties. So this was really quite a, quite a remarkable building. So we were really pleased to see the, uh, the architects and, and the owner of the building take the approach that, that they, that they have here. Um, so, uh, anyway, that's, if, if, are there any, any questions? We had reviewed it initially, just, uh, you know, schematically, uh, with, with a couple of, we had just a very informal look and we're able to have conversations. And we've had several conversations, uh, since about various elements of, of the, of, of the rehab. Uh, so I can answer any additional, uh, questions if, if there are any.
Okay. So before we, um, begin a discussion among the planning commission members, are there any questions for Eric, Tim or Dennis? About, about the reviews, uh, that they've undertaken? Okay. So, um, so before us tonight is this, this application, um, currently, um, you know, our, our most urgent, um, obligation is to provide any recommendations that we feel are, um, appropriate to council to consider for the conditional use here. Secondly, tonight, the applicant has asked for our opinion of some potential waivers to be issued, uh, one for the curb cut, uh, one for the way the parking design works. An implicit in all this is, uh, a waiver that would request us to consider this as a final plan and not just a preliminary plan. So none of that, do we have to make a formal full recommendation on tonight, but they're asking for our thoughts on that at this point. So that, that, that is at the minimum what we're being asked to consider tonight. And to, to remind you, we will receive a letter from the zoning officer and from M C P C, but I think we've heard these from M C P C substantially what, what its comments are going to be. So I guess I would like to ask, um, planning commissioners, uh, what reactions you have to this project, what your thoughts are, uh, on this project. Concerns, considerations you'd like to, um, offer, uh, for us to refer to council. And, um, as is my practice, just sort of go around the table, give everyone a chance to make your comments. And, uh, that would mean, uh, Jennifer, if you have any thing you'd like to bring up for discussion, please do.
Um, I guess first off, I do think that the addition is, um, kind of a modern interpretation and is a nice way of doing the separation of the historic with, um, the new, uh, while allowing the store to stand independently. I do think I have a concern about bike storage and how that will have an impact on the site or if any covered bike storage is required for residential, if that would require any additional expansion of the building to provide bike storage, like that covered space for it. So that may start encroaching further into that concrete pad that you pointed out earlier.
So we'll, we'll put a hole in the bike storage. I've got Chloe can answer that question since she wrote the bike storage rules. But let's add, let's just hear whatever was to say and then we can.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's generally really a pretty successful way to deal with one of these buildings. I think it speaks well for what we tried to accomplish with the historic district buildings and the establishment of the Harb. And I, I compliment, uh, the, the owner and his architect on coming up with a, a solution, which preserves the building, uh, adheres to the Secretary of the Interior standards. My, you know, my concerns I think are relatively minor. I do worry a bit about cars backing into Windsor Avenue. Uh, and with the traffic on Windsor, that's a little bit of a concern of mine. But I, you know, and, and I think the, uh, the trash storage issue is, is again a, a minor concern. But I think generally it's, it's, uh, it seems like it's a pretty successful way to reinforce the building and preserve the historical property.
And when you refer to the trash storage issue, can you describe what you're referring to?
Well, yeah, it's, you know, where, you know, the, the, uh, storage closet that's shown is small. I, uh, I wonder if that's really going to handle the, the day-to-day trash of both the, uh, residential units and the dental office. Will things spill out onto that pad? Uh, and will it become, uh, uh, an issue, you know, both in terms of, um, uh, visual sightlines from, from Windsor Avenue? And, uh, you know, vermin and that kind of thing. Uh, you know, maybe a little fence along, uh, that northern edge of that slab would, would take care of the, uh, visual aspects of it. But I, I think a little more thought has to be put into, you know, kind of the nitty-gritty issues of exactly how trash is going to be handled.
Thank you.
I think the, the point about screening, the screening the inevitable trash buildup is a good point. It's an easy thing to do and you're going to want to do it anyway, even if it's never drawn on any plan, you're going to wind up doing that. Just to make it, look, my shared day's concern about the potential for problems with backing into Windsor Avenue. I wonder if the civil engineers among us, uh, can. I worry about, uh, particularly space number one identified one circle. Backing out is going to surely back into oncoming traffic on Windsor Avenue. And it occurs to me that one potential way to make that less hazardous would be to create something in the street. This will require an act of conscience, of course, if you do this, that casts a shadow and, and gives some protection to that car backing out into the street. No one's going to turn around in this limited area, as you basically described before Chris. But when that, when that, when those cars back into the street, um, they are, it's hazardous. So what can we do to mitigate that hazard? I mean, I, I throw myself upon your, throw this to your creative, uh, team.
We haven't stumped this yet.
Yeah.
You know, good idea. If you don't, if you don't mind, could we just sort of, um, make sure everyone goes around and then we have a warm dress on this way?
That's my, that's the only concern. I, I also applaud the applicant in, in, uh, uh, coming up with a creative way to solve this, this site. Good job.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm not an architect, but from my layman's eye, it, it looks great. Just from, again, not a person who designs buildings, but I really like the design of this as a layman. Um, so excellent job.
Thank you.
I think, yeah, I'm interested to hear, um, more when it gets to that point in terms of the, um, any potential thoughts on the, the vehicle turning. And, um, even though I won't be on the planning commission at the time, I think that the suggestion about keeping the curb cut width at its existing level through a SADO waiver is something to consider. You know, depending on, I guess, whether Eric has any concerns about, um, whether that would produce any sort of like safety issues or anything. But if it seems to have operated at twenty-one feet, then it makes sense to me that. At least something to consider in terms of, um, the SADO waivers that were mentioned. Yeah, I think in, and in terms of, it had been brought up before, but I think that, that one of the benefits of this project is that I think it has flagged a lot of, uh, things for us to look at in terms of, um, ways that the, the code can work better, especially, um, you know, for everyone and for you all. But just generally, thank you for bringing this forward. We're glad that you're keeping your dental practice in Narberth and are, and are looking to, to revitalize a historic building and kind of just generally stay part of the community.
Next would be Heidi.
Um, I, I also commend this effort. I think it's terrific that you've worked so closely with the borough to make a success, look like a successful project. Um, I have a question about the eight-foot sidewalk. Did I hear that correctly? That would, um, I, I would actually propose that that be waived in this case. I mean, it's a residential building. I think a four-foot sidewalk is adequate. There's not going to be a whole lot of new apartment traffic, commercial, even commercial traffic to warrant digging up more grade around the sidewalk to widen it. There's also a telephone pole right along the four-foot line. So that, that's my suggestion is that, that also be waived.
Okay. Adam, any comments?
Yeah, I have a few. I mean, thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm glad. It sounds like actually a lot of work was done before it got to this point. So, um, the tremendous progress was made before we, we ever saw it. I have some some minor comments that you could take or leave. And then I have the comment about the parking, I guess. So the minor comment is, you know, that the right now in the design, the addition just sort of comes right down to the rendering of an asphalt parking lot. You could easily have a car bump into your building when parking or, you know, normally, I think you'd wanna have some kind of protection for the structure from cars, like a little wall or that, you know, bollards work too, but I'm sure you can come up with something a lot more aesthetic than bollards, like a garden wall or something. I know you're probably trying to fit it into the somewhere arbitrary lot, you know, lot layers by having the eighteen foot. It just barely fits into the lines, but I I just think that also the design might look better if you rougher the the box a little bit from the cars. I also think the trash sort of enclosure and overall space, you know, is sort of left unfinished or undecided. It's not a very big trash enclosure. You have to go outside to get to it and then it's just sort of an undifferentiated pad. I assume the grading will be correct, as was mentioned. I have no problem with keeping twenty one feet as opposed to twenty two feet unless somebody has a really compelling reason to require the extra foot. But I I kind of think like to me, the parking is superfluous. I mean, it's America, I don't know, we can't wrap our heads around this. But you have three spaces. If you convert the curb cut into a curb space on the street, you get one back and so you're down two, right? And then and then you have the whole block face with the elm, with a couple more on the street spaces. So, you know, does the does the office really need what amounts to two extra spaces being added on site versus the trade off of having to back across the sidewalk into oncoming traffic? I mean, you know, people could do that all day long and I'll just tell you from a risk management perspective, that there would never be an accident or there might be. You totally, you really, you wouldn't be able to control for that. It would, it's just a risk if people are backing in traffic, it's a it's a risk. So again, if you deleted the curb cut and just used on-street parking, I think, I think actually you'd be fine. But or even just leave it anyway, or even just limit it to one employee parking space or something like that. But otherwise, and then, you know, the the those are my main comments. That we're keeping the color scheme white or off-white or whatever, which is fine. But I do think that the the house is a little bit weathered. I don't know, I don't I don't know that necessarily, I know that white clapboard is the best thing for Pennsylvania environment as opposed to, you know, whether you could paint the house of, I mean, maybe the historic commission, I don't know what the original color of the house was, if it's always been white. But you could certainly think this whole design could work with any number of colors as well, but that's just my opinion. So thanks for bringing it in.
Okay.
That's an interesting comment about color. The the making the addition white makes the overall impact of the elevations much more jarring, I think. Coupled with the scale of the of the new addition, which is on the, which is on the large side, large scale side. But maybe experimenting with a different color for the addition would be worth trying. It's cheap, you know, this can of paint is gonna cost the same no matter what. But it's it'd be worth looking into what that does if you if you made it a different tone.
I mean, the and and people can have different opinions. Like I actually, I think this is a really nice compromise in terms of massing. I think the HARP, you know, does really describe well. I mean, I I'd go bigger personally, I mean, I don't mind bigger, I don't mind. I actually, and I don't mind actually historic looking either to go with historic building. But regardless, I think this is a lot successful. But imagine if you built it the way it's rendered, all the splashing rainwater from the paint splashes up onto your siding. And so you're trying to get staining around the base.
Yeah.
And in Pennsylvania, you're just always getting drip lines from the top and then, you know, under your window jams and stuff. And so it's it's just something to think about when you choose all white. Like, it's a very modern choice, but modern buildings need to really usually be kept very clean to, so.
Well, and I, yeah, picking up on your comment about the about the stucco coming down the grade. I think practically speaking, it's gonna get a whole lot better if there's some kind of a masonry base along there that could could withstand an occasional bump from a bumper and and can deal with the with the salts and the mud and and all of that. And and would also, to a small extent, break up, you know, the scale of the stucco a little bit. I think also adding in the control joints on the stucco, which I would assume there would have to be some.
What's that siding?
By the way.
Is that siding or the stucco?
I don't know if the material's been established yet. Can you tell us what material?
Uh, right now, uh, we are thinking the vertical siding, yeah. It's a member siding currently, but we are hoping for any.
Oh, I see, okay.
Do you get power wash it, I mean, but it's.
Well, nevertheless, I I think the fact that that the cars come right up, there's no zone, that sooner or later, somebody's gonna bump into the building, it's gonna get beat up. And you're right, it's gonna splash up and something should be done with that zone of up to three or four feet that would mitigate the, you know, the 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 dirt and the the dings and everything that are inevitably gonna happen.
I would, I have an observation, just when we talk about the driveway. So I have a question, a comment, which is, I'm guessing here you're showing six street trees because that's the number that would be required that you create. So one observation slash concern is that one little tree up near the northern end of the, excuse me, the eastern end of the site next to the elm. I'm I'm not sure that is a space for the sort of a long term future for that tree. I'm not an arborist, but I would suggest to look at that. But the other question is. Though that's a minimum, is there a possibility of putting more trees? Would that would that constrain your use of the site or or any of the objectives that you have? Is that something that you could consider? So I'll just, I'll just add that. So right now, I guess the comments on the floor are bike storage, trash storage. Is there a way to make backing into Windsor Avenue safe? And then some comments about the base of the building and the the way it relates to the the parking spaces. So let's tackle bike storage. Chloe, what does our code require in that regard?
I believe it would be two short term bicycle parking spaces and two long term bicycle parking spaces. The short term space is being like a bike rack out front and the long term space is being covered and secured in some way.
Um, do you have thoughts about, is that like, and that that is separate from the unit?
So if there are fewer than three residential units, there actually is not any bicycle parking required. So the the bicycle parking is required by the medical office.
Uh, there are three.
No, there will be.
There are three, it's now they're proposing reducing to three.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, okay.
But I thought we, well, that's it's everything. I thought we synced that up and it was now like it was less than five, but but.
Uh.
We're running it.
I don't think that was adopted.
So Chloe, can you tell us what the options are for the long term parking from, uh, you you, I think you said like secure.
Right, so it's, there's some requirements here. The basic idea is that, so that the requirement, so this was just adapted in the summer. I don't know if you looked through this, but the the requirement for the number of spaces and the, as in the zoning and then the requirement for the design of the spaces for the SADO. So there may be some potentially flexibility on exactly what the long term spaces look like, but they're supposed to be covered and secure in some way. So in a larger development, that might be like a bicycle parking room in the parking garage. That wouldn't necessarily apply here. There are kind of outdoor storage units called bike walkers that you can get that could potentially fulfill that requirement. And I think the planning commission might, or would have to be council, I guess, if it's that eventually, might be open to other possible, possible ways of kind, you know, protected from the weather and secure. Could try to list the exact standards in here, but that's the idea.
Is that called out in your letter, the bike storage?
Yeah, the requirements apply at bike parking in New York area.
So that Chris is something you'll be looking at then, or it's already incorporated into the existing?
It's not incorporated yet, but we'll talk.
Right, we we will need to discuss.
Okay. Then the next topic is was was trash storage. And Dave, I think that was sort of maybe the size of it as well as the screening of it, correct? In terms of the screening, the storage area, I guess it's indoor, there's no additional screening needed code wise, right? So what's your thoughts about the comments about about this, the trash storage area? And I would add to that, by the way, it seems like a lot of imperfeas surface to have just so you can access your trash storage area. A way to avoid that, which that would be desirable.
That space could also be utilized for the long term bicycle parking to separate.
Is that something you can look at more?
Yes, we look at whether or not we need all that, whether we can go parking there and.
Okay. Backing into Windsor Avenue. So let me, let me just ask, a few of the planning commission members expressed openness to a waiver for the driveway, the curb cut width. Does anyone feel firmly that that curb cut width needs to be twenty two feet, not twenty one feet? At least, I think you would have our support for that waiver, at least. But the bigger issue is the safety, people moving in and out. And I'm wondering, Eric, do you have thoughts about that? They'd be moving off the property past a row of parked cars into the street. I note that I went on the street view, there's actually across the street, a similar driveway.
I was just looking up and down the street. There is actually, there are a few other driveways that require, including the building across the street, has a back out parking. The one low hanging fruit, actually, which I think would probably be good anyway, the free parallel, the free street parking spaces up front, which currently go all the way right up to the edge of this driveway. But the parking actually starts farther away from the intersection than it has to. It starts like forty feet from the intersection. It only needs to be thirty feet from the intersection. If you shift to those three parallel spaces, you could actually move that parallel spot ten feet away from the driveway and still be far enough away from the intersection.
So you'd have a little bit more.
So this is actually, oh, yeah, you're showing that one there. These parallel spaces right now go right up to the edge of the existing driveway, but they don't start forty feet from the intersection here. This really only has to be, this really only has to be thirty feet and it's forty feet right now. So you could actually get those parallel spaces away from the driveway.
So there'd be a little bit more of a sight, more, there'd be more of a sight line.
I mean, I think we shouldn't call it a sight line, but there'd be a little more room to.
To maneuver.
To turn, yeah.
And also, is that a stop sign, like an all the way stop sign intersection?
Yeah.
Not every intersection on Windsor, so.
Currently, every other intersection, but that's true.
Windsor is where I did see the, what was it, can we see a car turned over? I'm saying it was through.
Really?
Months ago, yeah.
All kinds of things.
So we're like, what happens to that?
I often see cars going way down that block.
Yes.
It's quite hairy block, block. Eric, I, there are, there are four drive, there are three before, apparently, the existing driveways, curb cuts and driveways now, including another one right across the street where.
So once you go further to street, you actually see more of the current version that the street view will update if you go further. Yeah, there you go. That's what it looks like now with the elm.
Yeah, so one of my questions is, I'll be an observation, yeah, there's a stop sign. So so nobody's gonna be traveling at a super high volume. But but people haven't known to roar out of stop signs fast and try to like achieve takeoff velocity before they take a stop sign, that's not very normal.
There's bicycles that ride and.
Yeah, so Eric, do any, any ideas come to mind about that whole block or being able to traffic on that block? Like maybe a speed hump or something that says, hey, this is a block, this is a block I'm going, you need to.
So when I started working with the borough in twenty eighteen, we were talking about Windsor Avenue, what to do with it.
Yeah.
That's still the question.
Well, it got a lot better when, it got a lot better when the stop sign was added in Forests at the beginning of the construction of the elm.
I mean, that's a a broader question there. I mean, the, there's a lot happening on that road and the reason the code doesn't want you backing out into the road is for that very reason, because they want people coming to head in. And then we have a narrows.
We don't, we don't have, is this a one way block?
Yeah.
Yes.
And we couldn't put in like, it's not wide enough for like back and diagonal parking or something?
What can, sure, you could go directly, but like, does the fire department need fifteen feet of cartway on one ways, right?
They're gonna say twenty two feet for their outriggers.
For even on a rural?
On a one way, I mean, you can always ask, the fire department, my experience is that they're gonna say twenty two feet, right?
Pretty sure it couldn't be put in back and diagonal parking. I'm not saying I like back and diagonal, right? So it's, it's wise enough, right?
Can I ask a question? The, and I know that you, I know that under the code, the way it's written, because you don't have access to the office parking reductions, even if you had access to them, would you use them? Like if 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 the borough figured out a way to provide you access to reductions, would you reduce your number of onsite parking spots or you guys think that you can keep it at three?
And maybe even to extend that question, what's the, what's your project, what's your thought on how these spaces are gonna be used? Are these staff are gonna park there and come out once a day? Is it patients are gonna come in on a regular basis?
Residents.
Residents of the apartments, yes.
So I'll, I'll, I'll take a stab at that.
Okay, so do you know what I'm getting at, like how many, how many cars are coming in now?
Tell me if I'm wrong, but my assumption is there would be four customers. And that any residents would park on the street or they could park there at night when customers out there. I guess if staff would park on the street, they can walk, but you want customers to be able to park closely. And if you added more on-street, I think that'd be close enough, like a a diagonal spot on the street would be certainly close enough to get in the building. But we wouldn't want them to be for anyone, you'd want that to be, you know, for the office use only.
But I mean, and even in Google Street View, right, there's nobody parked there. I mean, the whole block, there's like five empty spaces now, so I don't.
So it sounds like you would still want onsite, would you want all three, does it matter?
We'd want some dedicated spaces, so it's not that they'd have to be on the lot. I think in front of the lot would be fine, but we'd want some dedicated for the customers to go in.
You know, here, so I'm just, as far as trying, trying to, I don't wanna like add more per, we don't need it. But it's almost like, it's, it's almost like, almost all the spaces you can back out and turn. Like if I'm looking at this space three, I can back, you can make a turn, you have to work. Space two, you can back out, but space one, I think that's the gym getting played. Is there any way to get a little bit more of a turn around, like back out turnaround area? And so that you can turn and back and then make that.
Are you able to bring yourself that?
Yeah. Well, you wanted this one? Yeah, sorry.
Yes, so my thought is, it's okay, guys, I'm gonna pivot this room. If this parking space, or at least this one in the middle, you need to go almost entirely straight back before you can turn anywhere. Now, with the sidewalk, you should be able to use the sidewalk. If there's on-street parking, you really should be able to go a little bit further before you're really getting in the traffic. And so you could pull out and I could probably turn it this way. I might need a little more paving in the front and then back up this way and then go back out again. And so I, I guess, as I can show something on paper that works, the reality is, I don't know that someone will do that. If they, if they pull in here and they feel that close and they pull back out, they know there's a stop sign here. And and because it's during the day, my guess is more of the problems are probably at night when our cars parked on both sides of the street. During the day, my guess is they would back out, they'd be able to see both ways and there wouldn't be as much of a problem. But that's, that's my initial reaction on how to fix it. I've thought about, well, if you angled them, you know, either way, then if you angled it this way, well, then it makes it easier to back this way and go back out. But the problem is, we can't be in the first lot layer and so we're stuck at that lot.
Wait a minute. How are you calculating that as a first lot layer?
I think it, it goes by the line of the building.
Right, so that's the side of the building. Yeah, because it's corner lot, that's also.
Yeah, the first lot layer. And I think this is one of those.
Yeah, almost both that same line.
If, if that's the case, then you've got a bigger issue. Because in five A, you're not allowed to park unless it's in the third lot layer.
So.
Chris, you want me to answer that?
Yes, please.
All right, so the primary frontage in this district has to be North Essex Avenue. So for corner lots, there's two first lot layers that are calculated the same way. However, there's only one second and one third lot layer and they're based off of the North Essex Avenue frontage. So all their parking is in the third lot layer. The access is actually just going across the first lot layer. So there's no second or third lot layer coming off of Windsor.
I don't understand it. Well, the drawing.
It is, the drawing is incorrect, I, I remember that. So there's the first lot layer line that makes an L here and this second lot layer line should have gone straight up so that there's a first lot layer on Essex, a second lot layer, and the rest is the third. And we incorrectly show it here right now, it should go straight up.
Yeah, I do recall, side yards have a first lot layer, a third lot layer, and a second.
We show on the occupancy picture.
It's on the A one, or sheet, on the.
Why would a turnaround area in the first lot layer be prohibited by code? Isn't that just part of the diagram?
It's not the, I think the turnaround would be okay, it's if I try to angle the parking spaces, then.
I get it.
That's what I was getting at with that buffer. If you have a shy distance from the building, you've drawn it so tight, the eighteen-foot spaces, that technically you're gonna, you know. But no, it's really that big of a deal personally. The, you, where, where Chris's explanation was where my mind went, but I kinda came to the same conclusion looking at it. It's like, you know, it, it kinda makes a hash of it to try to create a K-turn location and then no one's actually gonna do it. They're just gonna back into traffic, that's what they're gonna do.
But resharpening with parking on the street would at least provide a buffer at the edge of the driveway.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to think for a way to turn around on there, it's like, it's not big enough.
The other thing that you could do, but I don't think people would follow, would be say you could back, back in home. And so then, if you're driving up Windsor, you're back into the parking space. When you come to go out again, you're facing out, but I don't, I don't know that people would do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I, 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 I mean, the, 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 the right answer is not to have the onsite parking if you wanna be safe and to just, you have plenty of parking in the street, I think personally. And the street is wide enough that we ought, I mean, maybe it's not wide enough for diagonal parking, but I wouldn't be surprised. But you don't even need the diagonal parking, I mean, I, I don't think it's subscribed.
Well, our struggles may have to go the zone here and work for that.
I'm not gonna comment on that, but you know, again, I think that backing into the traffic is a risk, but it's, there's not really alternate site plan.
How many spaces do you have access to in your current location at the Essex building?
Cause you park in the back, right?
Yeah, there's a big parking lot in the back.
Well, I was just, I was just wondering like what they're, like, are they, are they constantly full there or are they not? The only reason I was asking is since you have a pre-existing relationship with them, I wasn't sure if there was some sort of way for you to rent spaces from them, if we were able to remove your parking requirements here and then you didn't have to park it onsite, if you were able to have some sort of long-term lease on parking, that way resolve your issues. It's a, it's, I know that's a long shot, I just, I, since you have a pre-existing relationship with that building, I wasn't sure if that's something you even thought they'd think of, or they would be thinking too.
Yeah, another, we don't know that building maybe in the future will be developed to another big complex.
It could, but if, if they were open to giving you some sort of long-term lease on spots and.
Yeah, that's, so let me ask the planning commissioners, on the face of things, as they stand now, would you be willing to support a waiver for the the driveway area to be designed so that turnarounds would be possible? Whether or not people in reality use them? Would you be inclined to support a waiver from that or, or not? Or if you were to grant a waiver, would there be some, something you'd want to see to make sure that that waiver was not causing any unintended problems?
Well, one waiver that we might talk about is a waiver pertaining to the requirement that the parking space itself be entirely outside, out of the first lot layer. So if diagonal spaces, if a corner, a diagonal space overlapped the first lot layer and that were to make possible a creative geometry to obviate backing into the street, I would support that waiver.
Maybe a variance.
Technically, that's not a waiver, that'd be a variance.
I would support that waiver. I would bill it. Cause I think, I think anything we do to allow this applicant to avoid backing his customers and patients, I should say, and staff out into the street is good, is worth doing, anything. Sure.
What, what, how do other people feel about the consideration of a waiver for that desired feature?
I guess I would, I would need to see a drawing of it. I mean, I'm looking at this now and I'm thinking, what could that angle, would that angle of space be? It doesn't really look like it can make it be a thirty-degree angle. It would be very, very slight and I'm not sure. It's gonna make a whole lot of difference.
Anyone else had a idea, I'd like to hear?
I think it's.
I have to admit, I was, I was intrigued by the idea of doing away with the onsite parking requirement entirely and do it, re-stripe along Windsor Avenue. But somehow I feel like that's opening up a floodgate of a precedent that is probably not where we wanna go. But it's intriguing.
It's where we should go, no, I think this is like.
How do you feel about the waiver question?
That, so I'd say, I think it's impossible till you show a drawing that shows it is possible. So I, you know, if you show a drawing that works and it doesn't chew through the whole, you know, town, then I, the site is okay, then I, I think it's preferable to have a safer design. I doubt that it's feasible, you know? And, and I, and again, like, I know it's, it sort of sounds arbitrary, but you have to put it like this, right? Like you could have the, the practice operate the entire life of the business and nothing ever happens and that would be fine. But, you know, one person backing in and hitting a bicycle or having a car crash, that's a really bad day, right? And so, you know, that could happen, but it's, it's just, I, I, I really think you, I suspect you have enough on-street parking that, that that's the safer and more convenient option, actually, but.
So it sounds like you would not be inclined to support a waiver just without seeing some other.
Without seeing it.
I'm, I'm in support of a waiver, I, I would like to see alternate parking. I mean, I'm just wondering, now, twenty-two feet for what's the requirement for cars? It can, when, when can you get narrower than twenty-two feet? When is it a one-way driveway?
A one-way driveway?
Yeah. I mean, is, in other words, is it?
Well, this, this driveway is a two-way driveway because of your vehicle operating in two directions.
But in reality, there're gonna be one pulling in the nose first and one backing in the bumper first.
Well, you're right, and that's why, you know, is it could require twenty-two feet? Yes, do I really care if it's narrower in their practice?
I mean, is there a way to pull in one side and even turn that way and then back out?
But the, yeah, the caveat is narrowing that driveway makes our turnaround problem harder. Because you're narrowing the road that people have to maneuver.
But Eric, let me ask you about this assumption, this is a two-way driveway. Isn't, isn't that kind of logic, doesn't that mean that every driveway is a two-way driveway? Cause cars are always coming in and out of driveways.
A one-way driveway, if it dedicated in and dedicated out of a parking lot.
Okay, so that means if I have a house, I have a driveway, it's a two-way driveway.
Well, there's also a distinction between a commercial and residential property, no?
That's the difference, Eric, yeah? Is that a way, is that something?
The driveway width is for a parking lot, so.
And this is a parking lot? Okay.
I mean, does it, but does it, does a commercial parking lot let you back on, back into the street?
No, because of code.
Well, there's, it's two, it's code, two code sections to talk about here. There's a driveway width, which is a twenty-two versus twenty-one foot width. Then there's a requirement of vehicles being able to maneuver without backing out.
Someone asked for the vehicle turning diagram.
So that we have asked for the confirmation of vehicles, how vehicles maneuver in parking lot.
I was just asking, cause we never ask that for a house, right? We don't say, oh, you're putting a house with a driveway, he shows you a vehicle maneuvering diagram, so I was trying to.
But for a house, you also, right, you, you, if someone's building a house with residents in driveway, they back out of driveway. Yes, all the time, right, commercial lot.
So I mean, I was just wondering, why couldn't, why couldn't the driveway be in here and then come over to here? And then you could back out and then you could get a couple of spots.
Is that lot layer, that's.
Parking is a fact.
Well, no, I, so it would be a lot.
Yeah, but. Yeah, I'll tell you what, I have a handicapped space requirement.
It's not a design issue, but a code issue. Cars are backing out driveways all the time, every block is narrower.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
They're pulling across the area.
But most, most are not on a bus route and have the kind of volume that Windsor has.
I don't know that that's gonna be a bus route much.
Windsor is not actually a bus route, Essex is right now, Windsor is not.
But Essex is a bus route and there are driveways on Essex, you know, the three hundred block, two hundred block. That's a bus route, there, there are driveways, people pull out backwards. So what I'm trying to say is, I understand there's an issue with pulling out of a parking lot into a street if you're backing in. This is three spots, it's not, it's within the umbrella of what you might see in a residential property, especially a shared driveway with two houses.
It's not quite accurate. The, they have three or four patient exam rooms, gonna be one-hour appointments. If everyone parked here, which they won't, it's a lot more than a house. Just, but I understand your point, but it's gonna be more backing than the house.
Okay, so I guess what I was trying to get, this is a code issue or a design issue? So I think, I think what you're hearing here is a reluctance just to grant a waiver on the face of it without seeing something that addresses safety. And that could be very creative, it could be something that involves a feature in the street that makes it safer, it could be something on the site that improves circulation, the orientation of the parking. It could be a changing the philosophy about how much parking is needed on the site. I think there's openness to exploring a lot of things, but a waiver of that, that requirement without some sort of compensation that, that helps to address potential safety issues. That's something I guess we wanna see before, before supporting that, that waiver. And it may be, that's something we might, might recommend to council and commission as well. In exchange for this, if we would like to see these issues resolved in, in a way that is acceptable to everybody. I just, cause I wanna move on. Another issue was, which makes like the other issue more complicated, is, is there a way to work with where the parking meets the building, resolve that a little better? In terms of keeping cars away from the building or creating, you know, a little tiny buffer on landscape or something? Is there a way to refine that design feature?
My initial reaction to that is a wheel stop, which prevents the wheels of the car getting close to the building. But then you're right, that makes the other issue harder because it forces them away from the building and they can't get up to be a few inches away. And so depending on the size of the car.
If we're talking about the arbitrary lot layer line, I think we should give some kind of, whatever the word is for that.
So the lot layer line isn't arbitrary, it's.
I don't mean arbitrary, no, but I mean, like, you know, there's this issue of the eighteen-foot parking space. That's why it's drawn so tight up to the building, is to fit into that lot layer.
Right. At the, at the width of the building, I was, I was a desire, the lot's just not wide enough. I mean, the, the, the way the parking relates to the first lot layer is really a code issue, that would be. Either a variance or.
More than code.
Yeah, you're right, and maybe Kevin could answer this better than I can, I remember off the top of my head, but.
I believe the first lot layer is shown where it is because that's where the building is. I believe this section of code actually allows the first lot layer to be closer to the street, but because that's where the existing building is, that's where the line is drawn. And Kevin?
Yeah. Yeah, that's correct, so if it were like new development on a vacant lot, the first lot layer, I'm pulling it up now, I think it's edge of sidewalk in five A, edge of sidewalk at six feet from the curb, whichever is greater with a maximum of twelve. But because there's an existing building there, you take it to the existing front facade.
So, so basically, if it's a historic building, if you could add an addition on the historic building that went closer to the sidewalk, then the parking could go closer to the sidewalk. So you're right, it is a code issue, but that's also the location of the historic building is affecting that section.
Well, here's, here's an idea. Is there any reason why the, the new construction, the building can't be a foot skinnier?
I know, I thought.
I mean, I'm looking at the floor plan and I'm not seeing anything that's driving what the width of that building has to be that can be reduced at least a little bit.
I, I agree, I thought that same thought, but on the other hand, we really care if the cars are one foot closer to the street.
Well, problem is, there's, that, that could trigger unintended consequences, like that was an issue with seven fourteen Montgomery, where that front, like lot areas.
For, for parked cars or for the facade?
Yes, yes. So there was a big debate about that, and so I, I think, I think we need to, that, that's a difficult precedent to, to break. Well, again, I, I think that maybe all of these are, I think what you're sensing is very, very strong support for what you wanna do, but it's kind of a game of inches in the back. Where that may require a mix of design refinement and maybe, again, a combination of code changes, parking issues, I don't, I don't know. But I think that, that the, the kind of combination of the impervious in the corner, the garbage, the parking and the street access just feels like it's a little more resolution, I think.
So if I could ask you about process? So, from what I understood earlier, with the planning commissioner, be looking to make some recommendations to council for their conditional use here, which is actually going to be in January. We originally thought that would be in December, but it's going to be in January because of sketches. So we would have an opportunity to come back to you in early January. We could certainly, I think, check off some of the easier items. I'm not sure we're going to solve the others, but we could, we could try to get rid of some of those.
Come back to you. That helps, I wasn't aware of that. Do you know what day that's scheduled for?
I believe it's the eighteen?
Eighteen.
January eighteen.
Okay. I think that would be, that would be a great suggestion, yeah?
I'll say that in terms of code changes, those are difficult for applicants because of how long it would take you.
Right.
Not that they're not the right solution.
Well, I just said that in the spirit of, we're open, we're exploring whatever works, but obviously design solutions would be, would be preferable, but there's a lot of things to juggle. And I also, you know, it, it may be that our confidence about the safety could be handled if there was additional traffic coming in the lot. So that may be, that may be part of the mix too, I don't, I don't know.
Would that be an additional, I have a question, potentially, is it?
Potentially, but I, I'm glad that doesn't have to be addressed until after we get into. Potentially, but I, I'm glad that doesn't have to be addressed until after we begin to consider it, yeah. I guess my last question is, do you have any immediate reaction to the comment I made about trees? The one that might not be in a good location and the possibility of adding additional trees?
I agree with you on the location, we were trying, I mean, so at the same time when I think that probably has the least chance of survival out of all of them, I also thought, well, it's a nice place for one because you have all the asphalt. For that reason, I just put it in there. If it doesn't survive, you could put another one, we could try to find a species that would work better next to paving, but that's why we left it there, because it is next to parking, which is typically where you go. In terms of more trees out, we can talk to the planning, see if that, you know.
Is there a landscape plan drawn?
No. I believe the, the street trees are the only requirement, so we should have.
It's a big yard, so that's why my mind went to like, well, you could get lots of garden space.
Eric, are there any other, um?
No, because it's, the street trees require the parking area is too small, it requires a buffer plan on the board. And I don't think it cuts any tree down, so it's just, just the street trees.
Okay. All right, so I guess what you're proposing, I was not aware that conditional use meaning had been moved, so that's, that's a good break. So, um, at least in terms of being able to evolve this. So I guess what you're proposing is you just take these things into consideration and see, um, if you could come back in January with them more, to resolve some of these issues, which really just pertain to like the back quarter of the lot, really. I think, though, I just want to underscore, you're hearing very strong support for what you want to do and appreciation that you want to remain a business person in Norberg, especially from Miriam who relies on you.
Three generations.
Appreciation that you reached out to the harm and have been incorporating its guidance to, I guess, from what I'm hearing, success, so all of that is greatly appreciated very, very much. And I do want to convey, even though it feels like there's a lot of picky details here, that we're eager to kind of help figure out how to resolve them, Chris knows that, uh, we try very hard to do what we can to help, to help make these things work. So, um, we're not bringing these things up because we want to not see you come back and run your practice here. So, um, so thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to comment on or add or say before we move on? Okay, anything, Chris? Okay, thank you, Chris, and thank you, uh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, just, there's a few numbers that we filled out online, but I.
I'm sorry.
I don't know if they want to.
I, I, before I, I do have to ask, since they're members of the public online and here, I neglected, is there any public comment on this, uh, proposal? I apologize for asking that earlier. Anyone here would like to make a comment? Anyone online like to make a comment? See no, seeing no comments from the public, then, um, we'll, um, thank you again for being here and, uh, we'll see you again next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the other items on our agenda have to do with possible, um, one is good possible, um, conditions to develop the council in general, the others are possible, um, maybe good to talk a couple of minutes about in general. That's a big space. That's a big policy issue, um, I think.
I mean, it's just really calculating how much is that space worth? Because if someone's wanting to drop, because a space, I don't have a person who'd work more than a space technically a block away, but.
Are we back online?
Yeah.
I think so, so I, I just, I, you know, I don't know the answer, but that parking is free to me. The meters are there so that residents don't park there. Right, it's presumably like to keep the, the, the spots open during business hours. And that's just it, when like a demo acquaintance, like one hour, you give it a two, right? So you just, the meters can be free as long as you got to flip it every two hours.
We can, we can throw that into the mix of possible solutions, but I want to move on to the next topic. We can, we have guests here and it's getting late, so I'd like to start the last part of the evening by, um, asking for a conversation about, a proposal circulated for a, an additional conditional use requirement related to green building. But I have to, um, offer a thesis, which is actually in the, in the document, but, um, you all know that, um, when we discussed the green, the, um, the green building bonus provision, so to speak, where we landed was, um, including requirements that had to do with renewable energy. And we didn't include any requirements related to construction or design. And the reason we didn't is because we felt, for a variety of reasons, it wasn't practical to include that in the code. Nevertheless, remains a strong interest of the public that we consider, uh, approaches to this. And so, um, um, because of that, I thought it was, um, useful to, to try and take another step. And so what I offered to you is a different approach to this.
Is, is it recording, is that being recorded?
It sounds like it's recording.
What?
I thought I heard it, so it was recording.
It's recording.
Probably, yeah.
I was just confirming. Now where, yeah, whether it's recording to the right place, I don't know.
No, with all this AI stuff going around, you should be able to ask it, hey, are you recording? Yeah, if you raise your hand just like this, it, it behaves as if you raised your hand, so you should be able to respond. Anyway, um, because it's too difficult to write this in a code, you know, code is very rigid, very hard to change, and so it has to be able to apply to many projects over many situations. That didn't seem to be a, a good, a good approach, but, um, the approach here is to say that anytime a conditional use comes up, that we offer a structure through which the Borough Council can negotiate whatever green building provisions are possible, realistic for that particular type of project, at that particular moment in time. Which is always changing. The, I've stated what I think is the kind of authority for doing this in our, in our code, which is essentially that whenever a conditional use application's in, the Borough Council is able to request different kinds of conditions be attached to the approval, so they can ask for these things. Uh, some are required by code and some are voluntary. So this would be something that's in between in a way. And so, so essentially, the idea would be, when a, when a, um, when a, um, when an application for, for a conditional use project comes in, the applicant would be asked to consider incorporating a range of green building practices and to state which ones they think are possible, feasible, realistic, given the scope and nature of their project. And that this be done in consultation with the EAC. And that the, um, um, the, um, whatever, whatever steps are taken in any particular project would essentially be agreed to through this kind of conversation between the Borough and the, and the building owner. The building owner might say, you know, reusing existing foundations, this isn't realistic because there's no existing foundation, so I'm not going to do that. But they might say, well, um, I have a way of recycling my waste, so I'll do that, I'm fine with that. So it would be kind of a, a conversation against the checklist to see what's feasible. And, um, uh, it would be mutually agreed upon. It would involve meeting with the EAC for advice and guidance. It would require the EAC to recommend that they support this, this applicant's efforts. And that the, um, the, uh, application would include a letter that outlines what the applicant is committing to for this particular project. And the, um, the enforcement of this would largely be the way that the other condition we've discussed recently about building design would occur. Uh, which is that, um, a licensed engineer, architect would provide, observe the building and provide certification that, that these steps the applicant has agreed to take are being incorporated. And if there's a variation that gets raised in one of the construction management meetings or, um, gets flagged for the Borough's, uh, building officer. And, uh, um, you know, ultimately, the, the, the key enforcement we would have, as with the design, would be an escrow payment that the owner would make against completion of the green building improvements as requested. If they don't complete them, they would lose their escrow payment, that's the main enforcement mechanism. I, I'm suggesting this as a bridge between what's desired and what's practical in the way that we can regulate and manage things. And, um, taking into very serious consideration all the comments that have been made over the past few years by members of the commission about the difficulty of having these kinds of requirements. But in the spirit of trying to address the public's interest and concerns about, about trying to encourage, incentivize this, these sorts of practices, so I leave it for your discussion. First, I want to hear from people who are supportive. Want to go around the room like before, or does anyone want to just jump in? And after, um, everyone has just come, then I'll ask for you guys to jump in.
What's our expectation that the developer would agree to do this?
What, what do we, what do we expect the outcome from there?
No, what is our expectation that the, the, and the developers would agree to these requirements?
No, I honestly, I honestly don't know, but, um, this is also sort of a, um, a way of, um, putting the issue on the table explicitly, even if there's very few things they are willing to do, at least it's sort of a starting point to get, is part of, be the thought process.
I'm just trying to imagine how it would function. Not succeeding.
Well, lack of success would mean that we, we have these conversations and they don't.
No, I'm not succeeding in imagining how it would work.
Oh.
It's my feeling. So maybe, maybe what we ought to do, Todd, is to hear from the, from the proponents of this idea. And, uh, because, because they, I'm sure, imagine how it would work. And so I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear that from, from the advocates for this concept.
Is that, everyone okay with that, or the other folks would like to make comments first? By the way, I'm not going to, I mean, I'm the proponent of this right now, I'm trying to react to it personally. But they are proponents in general for these sorts of things. Is, is the folks okay hearing from them, or do other comments?
I'd like to, yeah, I'd like, because I'm still digesting it, so I would actually like to hear from y'all while I continue to put my questions.
You're in Shakaw, Norberg resident, one forty-nine, Marion Avenue, and a member of the Environmental Advisory Council. And, um, I do want to just note that we have two strong community proponents, Jean De Sabatino and Louise Giuliano, so I just want to make sure we get from that on, on Zoom as well. And they did a lot of the groundwork for this and kind of brought it to the EAC, um, for, over several years ago. So, I mean, the basic, the fundamental idea is that energy and transportation cause the large majority of greenhouse gas emissions. And there are also areas that require significant infrastructure, like, like the world, you know, needs to shift. On the infrastructure in a way that, you know, it's not, you know, like, it's not low-hanging fruit in the sense of like recycling or, you know, even composting, or, you know, it's something that requires, especially the building energy, um, uh, requires the, um, you know, requires the change to be made at the moment of construction, it can't happen afterwards. Not even like, you know, solar panels could be added afterwards, but, um, the big issue is the source of energy that the, um, that a building is going to use. And so from our perspective, um, you know, when you look at energy, it's the single most important thing. And the real, like, the most impactful thing, kind of, I think from any, almost any perspective, you know, in the Norberg context, is, is it going to use electric energy and will it use gas? Or, you know, other fossil, it would be natural gas. And so the EAC's perspective is that in order to, you know, our understanding is that the only legal pathway or, you know, situation in which the Borough can, um, require, um, any sustainability or a kind of climate, um, you know, uh, what do you call it, just design, um, is through a bonus. You know, it can't be required, it has to be through bonus. And so the EAC's position is that the, um, commitment to not, um, add gas hookups and instead design the building structure around electric use for energy, heating, you know, et cetera, and cooking, clothes washing and drying, um, is the most important thing. You know, it's, it's the biggest, you know, buil- building energy is just a big chunk of greenhouse gas emissions and that would be, you know, to my mind, in the EAC, the other stuff, you know, it'd be great to reuse building materials and those kinds of things, but really, the impact, you know, going to the trouble of having a green building bonus that allows people to install gas hookups, to me is, it's almost like, it's not, I don't know. It just seems really a, a missed opportunity and it would prevent Norberg from achieving our, um, carbon neutrality by twenty forty.
That's the name, we do have that in our.
Yeah, that's what, don't, yeah.
The, 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 the last year, is it last year?
This year.
This year.
Seems like last year.
It seems like so long.
We did include for, um, conditional use projects, they, they now have to, or there's a, um, requirement that certain kinds of, um, renewable energy standards need to be met. That's in the code now, and so the first project that will come through will be two thirty, Haverford, will meet that requirement.
And again, the no, not, she's saying the gas hookups, which is, I think, it was like a, it was allowed for commercial. For the commercial cooking.
The only gas hookups out right now is like if you have a restaurant or something.
That's not what's on the table.
Yeah, that, that, we're trying to build on that, so apparently.
Oh, so that's already like established?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, because we saw this list and we were like, wait, where's the, it doesn't include energy? So the energy is like a given that that would be.
That's already.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so I think we were, um.
Yeah. Well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I think I've, I've said my piece, I'll, I'll speak to Joe and Louise and.
I'm Joe Siskano, I'm the chair of the EAC. And I, yeah, I, that won't be redundant with what you already said, I think, I think the key is that that renewable energy provisions are in place already, which is good. In terms of the process that's being described here of having this conversation with the EAC and the planning commission, I'm, I would be in favor of that, I think that's a good approach. As long as it's clear that, you know, these other kinds of things about reusing existing building materials and so on would be in addition to the, to the energy requirements. Those are, when we're thinking about buildings that should be getting this green building bonus, we need to be thinking about, is this building going to be adding greenhouse gas emissions in twenty forty? Which means it should not have using gas for heating, for example. Gas for cooking is not great, but that's a much smaller contribution than the gas for heating. So if that's all in place already, I don't know if that is meant to be part of this same conversation process too, or if this is just additional requirements beyond that. But either way, I think.
This would be additional.
Yeah. Would it all be?
We got it about as far as we could with the renewable energy, um, this year. So, I mean, obviously this is pretty good, but, but that's already a big deal. This would change that, this would be additional.
Can I ask, is, can I, um, is, um, for the renewable energy provision, does it specify electric? Because my concern is that if you allow.
It says that, um.
It prohibits fossil fuel hookups. It prohibits fossil fuel hookups.
Yeah.
Hookups, okay. Because somebody would say, oh, I'll use, you know, green natural gas, like, you know, recaptured methane. But then a hookup is there and they could always slot that out.
Specifically prohibits natural gas, propane oil, and other fossil fuels.
Prohibits, okay.
And it establishes a priority that number one, if there's any way to produce energy on site, that you should pursue that. Then secondly, if you can't do that, then you should purchase your energy from, by renewable. And third, that if and when Narberth implements its community choice program, you commit to joining it. So that's the hierarchy.
So I think if those provisions are in place, that's, those are all what I would consider the essential perks of this. The things that are outlined in the proposal here, I think are excellent to consider also. It would be in addition to that.
Correct.
Would be great.
That was adopted July 20, all that stuff.
Great. Thank you so much for your, for your work.
So this, the reason this is here is because in getting to that point, we were also considering a broader range of requirements related to green construction practices. And we ultimately felt we could not include them in a code. Because it was, it was not possible to write a code that could accurately reflect the different kinds of construction, the different kinds of buildings, the evolving nature of construction, the environment in which we were working moved too fast for us to be able to put something in a code. And so this is a new approach to that, which is we're not going to put it in a code. But what I'm going to say is each time a project of a certain type comes before us, we will see at that moment in time for that kind of project, for that person, for that applicant's circumstances, what is feasible. Enforce that conversation. Turns out, very little may be feasible. But we don't know what's feasible until we ask.
I think the key is as long as it's clear to the applicant of the things that are actually required for the green building bonus, and then these additional things that are negotiable, depending on feasibility.
Yeah, well, I, maybe I'm, I'm just sort of taking that as granted. Yeah, maybe I, those, those things are.
I guess, kind of back to Jim, Jim Cornwell's question, in terms of the process, I mean, I could imagine that the EAC and the planning commission would need to have some very up to date knowledge, you know, given that a developing incentive for a developer, you know, would be to just say, no, I can't do any of that. You know, can I still get the green bonus, please? I mean, any of the negotiable stuff. And so I feel like, you know, somewhere we need to know that the process includes some research or some kind of consultation about, you know, and sometimes it's, it's an honest mistake, you know, if people aren't up to date on, you know, on recent development, recent technological developments or price changes or, you know, availability of stuff. They may have asked two years ago if, you know, some sustainability measure was possible. They were told, no, and they think it's not possible or not financially feasible. So I, I think there has to be some research built into the process, given that we're talking about, you know, you know, dealing with the changes as they occur.
Do you think we have that expertise within our community? Outside of the EAC and the planning commission?
No, outside of the EAC, we have none.
Well, then outside of both.
Except, except those of us that are involved in the construction industry, you know, have probably inherent skepticism about the feasibility of getting something like this up and running and keeping it running. Because I cannot imagine, as I said earlier, I have trouble imagining it functioning the way we would all like it to function. Contractor is going to say, well, you know, my, you know, my, with my equipment, I run a Honda generator that burns 10 gallons of gasoline every day. And I ain't stopping using that. Because that's how I drive my nails. And you can go to hell with, you know, your, your idea about driving nails with a, with a soft hammer, because I'm not doing it. That kind of thing. I, that's what I picture. And it's an uphill fight to get to, you know, with the nature of the construction industry, which I know pretty well.
So it seems like the applicant would also, I would be aware of that. It would be up to them to propose something that they feel is feasible, right?
Yeah, so.
Hopefully, they wouldn't propose that.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to conjure up an image of how that would, how that would work in a way that's beneficial to the community. And not, and not, as I said before, not successfully imagining that.
The different, and I think that the, the, the hookups especially like makes sense because it's really clear and objective. And we know, and we know that has a big impact. My, my concern with, with, because I, I love the idea of this, but my concern with some of the things that are a little bit more generic-ish is that in an odd way, I feel like it almost makes it harder for probably the greener type of development, which is people that are reusing existing buildings and putting in an additional, like, not a gigantic thing, they're not demolishing a structure. And those are probably going to be the folks that are the small developers, who are going to be the least likely people to be able to navigate this system, I think.
And I think one thing related to that is that some of these things are the more difficult things to quantify in terms of their environmental impact. Not using fossil fuels, that's relatively easy for us to calculate its impact. These, these ones would be more challenging.
And part of the, the whole issue of the quantification is the, is, is the oversight aspect of this, having, having worked on a number of lead projects. I mean, I read these, and, and most of these items, you know, would fall under, you know, a lead methodology. But in the lead methodology, you have that whole final certification process. And each one of these items, it's, it's easy to read, minimize waste and recycle waste. You probably had a stack of documentation about this stick on a building project to demonstrate that the contractor actually did that. You know, and, and, you know, so you get bogged down into that. Well, yeah, it's, it's great to say, and I don't think any of us would disagree with any of these items. But how you actually implement it and damage, and have the, the contractor and the owner demonstrate that they actually complied with it is a whole nother issue.
And it has significant costs. That, that, that.
Yeah, the, yeah, the certification. I mean, the last time I did this, which is now. Process that complicated, is that.
I'm sorry?
Because I'm not proposing a certification process like that. I know that we have Heidi and Adam, also Jean and Louise. Did you want to, did you have something to add?
Yeah.
After you and our other commissioners.
The list of recommendations would be based off of a standing checklist, like an Energy Star program that covers residential, commercial, multifamily properties. And then it becomes a tiered program, proving X number of points. In the affordable housing sector, you don't actually get the certification, you don't have to get certifications to, to do these energy requirements or green requirements. But they're all required. And the architect is then responsible for signing off on it. It becomes like in the hands of the architect to then select things that they can quantify as the onsite person during construction administration, as opposed to things that require like stacks of documentation. So it, it does start changing the conversation. And sometimes the project needs to recycle materials and then the contractor has to sign on. And that's just what, but it's, it's less of a certification. So the architect is the one that's reviewing to state, I received all these documents from the contractor and can state that it aligns with what I said at the start of the project on the checklist. It's not going to have to a third party viewer. So they, I mean, like, Energy Star covers all of those aspects. Green communities is mostly designed for affordable housing, but like could be a good checklist as the basis for a conversation. Are there, you know, ways of doing a points system?
We've looked at a checklist system, I'm forgetting the municipality right now off the top of my head.
NPA.
It was nearby. And they had a similar checklist system they use for their green points program. We can find that.
And do they, do either, their standards by residential versus commercial, or do they have, have they?
I don't recall. We had a meeting that was a long while ago.
The Swarthmore?
It might have been.
The Swarthmore, they have a green building program. But the way they operate it on is basically if you hit X, Y, and Z, you get a reduction in your billing fee, in your term fee.
And believe me, Larry, that.
They don't have, they don't, they don't have much of a follow up on it. But.
Yeah, they don't really follow up on it.
But ninety, ninety percent of the utilization of it is Swarthmore College, who does follow through on it.
Right.
So. So, so I want to avoid kind of conflating this with points, although I particularly have a, a good checklist to help.
I did, I did, yeah.
It's not what's proposed here. What's proposed here is something a little less rigorous than that, which is simply, I mean, this is sort of like a get your foot in the door idea. Like, if you are getting conditional use and you have to have a meeting to discuss if there are any of these practices that you can incorporate, you decide which ones you can. And if you say you're going to do it, then you're held to account if you, as just sort of a first step. It's not collecting points to get something. It's, it's just, it's, it's sort of, you know, it's, it's almost like a, a HARB advisory review in a way, you know? You say like, well, you know, we can't compel you to do things, but we want you to come in for an advisory review so we can talk to you about your choices and see if any of those choices make sense for you. It's, it's kind of a parallel to that.
Well, if it was half as successful as the HARB advisory reviews have been so far, three cheers.
Okay. Maybe that's the model we should look at.
If, if we, well, I think the model should include encouragement and positive reinforcement, which is what we have on the HARB, have applied on several projects in our two years with good success. I'm unbelievably happy with the success that we have achieved. We saw it today.
Yes. By the way, I promised to swing to this over. Do you guys have any comments about this?
Let me ask you, there's a, is it a typo or is it just, it says, under enforcement? There's the escrow payment, right? And what happens? It just says, if the variation is not corrected under paragraph two, like.
That's a typo.
Okay.
That's this previous, should there be an issue?
Put onto the ice floe and pushed out.
You would be asked to back a car out of the street, drive it to Wintor Road, a hundred times to get it out.
Throw in the bag.
While a fire truck is coming down with its extenders.
I think, you know, I, I think, my only, my only major concern is that, is, is to keep it efficient from a project development standard, just to keep it affordable. And then the, the main thing there is, like, it, it's probably fine the way it is, but just not to have too many, like, meetings. If, like, if it's, because I don't think that necessarily it's going to be that hard to do, right? You have your checklist, you have your, just your architect and engineer follow, you know, basically following best practices. So does it have to have a hearing, so to speak, at the committee versus just, see what I'm saying? Like, if it can be followed regardless. Like, it's, for example, it says, you know, meet with the environmental advisory committee. Well, could it be with just one person? Or did it have to go to a committee meeting?
Well, that's a good question. And Miriam's question also made me think that, as with preservation, where we often thought a town architect would be a good investor, you know, maybe a consulting, you know, engineer or architect who understands these practices could be of valuable service, who can, someone who's actually in the middle of this and knows it, you know, because that's what they do all the time. And we pay them X dollars an hour for a few hours a month. And that, that might be a better way than having them meet with a commission.
Yeah, I, mainly just like to keep it moving, like, because time is money. And then I feel like if they, you know, because you don't want to burn up your project fees on, like, architectural consultation. You want it to go into the, to the project.
Right. I know we have two members of the public who are on Zoom who are interested in this topic, but I can't quite see.
It's Jean and Louise.
Yeah. Jean and Louise, would either of you like to make a comment? At this point in the early development of this idea?
Louise does.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Louise.
Hi. I'm sorry that I wasn't prepared to really address this. I wish I had been. But I have to say that the, I think in 2018, this is when we started doing research on green buildings. And we were in touch with other communities like Doylestown and places like that that have done incredible, made incredible commitments to this. Even the Narberth has said that they are, made a commitment to the, to this kind of thing. And I, I'm surprised that we're not moving forward and, and realizing that if you give incentives, we can really help to get developers to move in this direction. I know that Jim Cornwell perhaps has different experience that, you know, than certainly I do. But I, I just don't see how we can go backwards in this. It's going to be cheaper in the long run for them to do this kind of work.
We're not, we're really not debating the value of doing this. We're, we're trying to craft a procedure that allows us to do it effectively, given the constraints we have with our municipal powers and, and sort of the realities of the kind of construction we have here. And the incentive, some of the incentives you're referring to are discounts on building fees, which, you know, we, we looked at that and, and it, it really doesn't amount to a whole lot. I mean, you, you kind of have to have the commitment to do it. The fees are not that large, that they're going to be a substantive item in your balance. We, we do have now some incentives tied to zoning. But that is, as I was discussing earlier, for easily quantifiable and achievable things like renewable energies, the things we're talking about now are a little more complicated and hard, as, as the planning commission concluded after many months of discussion, hard to kind of tie to, to a zoning incentive. And so we are all ears. We, we don't want to have more meetings where we have people say, I know if communities do this. We want to hear about, if there's a good idea out there, we actually want to hear it, and how it works. Because what we're trying to do right now is, is craft that. So, and, and largely, we're doing this because of you, because you come to us all the time and you say that this is important. And so we keep, we keep trying to take wax at it. But it's a, it's a very challenging problem, given what boroughs can do. And, and given the resources we have and given the kinds of projects we see here. And so this, this is our current attempt to try to start to get our foot in the door. So please, you know, understand, we're supportive of this, but we're, we're trying to best work and navigate a couple of, what is it? I guess find a way for the eye of the needle here, to something that, that helps us get started.
Todd, if you, if you think that this is, the timing is right, we can revisit this and be back in touch with Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission and Doylestown and the other communities that have made a real commitment and see how they are doing. And, you know, I haven't been in touch with them in a number of years. But if this is good for, for the planning commission, then we can revisit it.
Well, I, I think that would, it would always be welcome to get more information about what might work.
Okay.
I was just going to say that I, I mean, I think the basic procedure, the spirit of this is that an applicant is interested in this. They put in effort to demonstrate how they're going to do this. And we have this discussion with them, the EAC and planning. And I think that, conceptually, I like that framework. I think that's a good path forward.
I think we might. Can I just say this one slight tweak? It's not that the applicant is interested. They would be required to have the discussion.
It's a condition of the development.
They may not be interested, but they're still required to have this.
So every applicant would do this.
Who's, well, right now, at this point, it would be for an applicant who's seeking conditional use. Like, is that, that is where we can begin.
Level.
Yeah. And see how it works. And build these systems in place. And if it bears fruit, as with the HARB, you know, as the HARB bears fruit, it's responsibilities, its rules can change, right? But it has to start somewhere.
Right. I agree. And then I think that, you know, the details of whether we give them a checklist, and they say, these are the items in the checklist we would like to do, or we leave it open ended, I think that can be worked out.
Yeah, I mean, when I look at Doylestown's.
That's the one we were looking for.
Yeah, but, but, you know, it's a, it's a five page checklist that's detailed. And I could imagine it could at least start a conversation. It does have points awarded, I assume based on impact, you know, where this type of insulation gets you two points and that type of insulation gets you four points, et cetera. And, you know, I, I think it would probably be helpful, given, you know, this is, I haven't known how successful or not the HARB has been, but hearing that it has been through no, where it's just like a, you know, it's kind of like a loose, it's a looser system. It's a more informal process guided by some principles like positivity and, you know, mutual respect and all that kind of stuff. Um, I think that the EAC members could attend HARB meetings and kind of see how the process goes. I guess in my mind, you know, like in, I, uh, teach at the College of New Jersey and right now we're working on our application for the Association for the Advanced Environmental Sustainability Higher Education's STARS program, which is a checklist with, you know, on platinum. You know, it's all, it's like any of these. And so, you know, like thinking through that process, it's so flexible. It's like if you're a master's institution, then you do this. If you're this, then you do that. Like, you know, it just, it has a lot of, um, provisions in it. So I guess, you know, you may have already gone, you know, as a council, may have already gone through the process of thinking through, well, how would a points-based system work? But to me, I guess, I've seen so many of them and they seem, they seem to work. I don't, you know, I mean, maybe, you know, maybe I'm foolish, but, um, having a list of points.
Not proposing that at the moment.
Okay.
Of points, because that gets us into a kind of next layer of management and that I think is, um, at the moment, I don't see the landscape for something like that. What I, what I see is more of something where, because I think, I think that, that can, can, you know, can, managing that and conditioning a, a decision, you know, conditioning a, a decision about a building permit fee is one thing. And, and I honestly don't think that has a lot of impact, you know, it's on the table. Um, conditioning something more significant, like your ability to build something and something like whether you use the right insulation, there's just sort of a mismatch. You know, you can't, you can't put the financing of a project at risk because someone's gonna complain about the insulation you use. Um, and that, that could be what happens. I mean, that's what people worry about. So this is sort of trying to navigate the in-between. You ask someone, what are the things you can do that you feel you can commit to? And then, here's a lot of things people do. Are there things here you can commit to? And what are they? And once you commit to them, you're committed to them, right? Unless you can get a reapproval or something. And the, the reason for that is because we're not looking at what the end and ultimate processes, we're looking at what is their first step in a process that if it works could maybe be better one day, as the HARB was. The HARB, we had bloody fingernails, just trying to hang on to the top of, you know, to, to get to the top of that wall and get over it, right? And we did. Now the HARB's in place and people are seeing what it's delivering to our community. Um, and that, that means there's potential, th- this applicant came voluntarily to the HARB because that applicant saw the value in that conversation, right? So two years from now, an applicant might say, well, I'm just gonna go talk to this environmental person. Because I, you know, that's what this community wants, right? So what we're trying to do here is not craft the perfect system for the end, end state. We're trying to figure out what's the next reasonable step that we can take. And that's why it's more of a conversational, sort of just to force the question on the table. That's the step, right? I don't, I think if we try to invent a system of points and measuring and, and evaluation and documentation, it, it, it won't, it won't fly, you know? But I think it's something where we just have someone come in and say, look, your practices that are occurring right now, are there any that you can adopt and include? And if so, and if you can't, well, we're sorry about that. But at least the conversation's been had and we can see how that works.
I guess I don't have a good enough understanding of how the HARB works to really, like, imagine what, it sounds, it sounds like, like they would just say, sorry, I can't do anything. I don't, yes.
You just saw it right here. That's not what happens. A guy went and put an addition in the front of his house. He went to the HARB and HARB said, you know, there might be a better way of doing this.
And they just talked about, it was just, it wasn't like a bag of tri, like, it sounds like, I mean, what's your sense of how many kinds of, you know, when Dennis was talking about, well, you know, the standards are to have it look different and be smaller, you know, he went to like three or four.
That's not how we approached it.
Kind of after this.
The way we approached it was they came in with a site plan.
Right.
And had two ugly additions in the front of the house that kind of look like.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna say the word.
Yes, yes, yeah.
You've heard it before. And in a conversation in this room, we showed him how another approach to, to expanding the functional space in that house by adding an addition in the rear where that crummy garage is was gonna be a much, a far superior solution. And then they went home and they ran with that idea. And what we see, what we see today is the, you know, we're not going to the finish line because of the parking thing, but we're close to the finish line on a, a, a way better plan. And it's because they voluntarily sought the advice of a, 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 a group of knowledgeable people who provided some insight that they didn't have otherwise. And that's the way, the, that's the most effective way, I think, to implement some of the, some of the, um, energy, uh, uh, goals that you guys are, are so passionate about. We've, we have, we have, uh, institutionalized the business about fossil fuels. That's done.
Fantastic. Thank you so.
And that's probably ninety-five percent of the pie. There's five percent of the pie left.
Right.
And maybe, maybe, I'm skeptical, but I will, I will acknowledge that maybe, um, developers will be interested in some of those, some of that five percent. You know, maybe I won't idle my diesel truck, you know, on the street while we're, while we're having lunch. That kind of stuff. I mean, that's where the energy gets, gets squandered, okay? Maybe I'll, maybe I'll find a creative way to recycle the materials that we have to rip out because they're all muffy. Maybe. But that's, that is the, that's the icing on the cake. We've already got a big, a big piece of this is already done.
The waste.
I just wanted to add one, one thing, which is that I thought, I do think it, it's interesting as well because we just had the conditional use and we spent the bulk of our time trying to figure out how to make it easier for them to use single occupancy vehicles. And so it just strikes me in this conver, in this conversation is especially like, I mean, maybe there's other ways to, to approach this as well, especially, you know, like you said, transportation is one of the biggest.
Yep. I think that would be something that could be part of that conversation, right? If there's, if they can find ways to support multimobile transportation, that has a net positive, very net positive environmental impact. And so that can be something that could be gained through this process of having these conversations, that would be of tremendous value, right?
Or simply, even though we have to talk about cars, um, we also talk about this. I think that was the point you're trying to make, right? Then we spend all our time talking about the covenant and cars. And unfortunately, we do, because people use cars, but we spend no time talking about this because it's not on the agenda. It's not on the table. And so what I'm trying to say is this gets it on the agenda. It doesn't maybe invent a perfect system yet, but at least it gets that going. And then when we learn how that system works, perhaps we can make it more rigorous. But at the moment, it's just getting it on the agenda.
Just a couple.
Go ahead.
Quick comments. One is that the HARB works, there are certain kinds of things that require like an official, uh, vote of the HARB and then council for approval, like tearing down a store building, for example. And then there's a number of other things that require an advisory meeting with the HARB. We're literally, you're only required to talk with them. You don't actually have to implement anything they say. The HARB has taken and approached all those things, kind of similar, we, like, Jim has already explained. They start with the conversation, but, um, uh, I think the analogous thing with green building practices generally is that there's a bunch of things that sort of were figured out a way to put in the code that are now in the zoning code and that, um,
Transport.
It don't impact every, uh, building, but there, there's a way to start with that. And then that, a bunch of other things where I think trying to, trying to create some conversation, like, I don't know what, I mean, it seems like maybe for the conditional use, you could even write in the code, one of the conditions is a required meeting or attending one regular meeting of the Environmental Advisory Council or something like that that requires an applicant for certain kinds of projects to at least have some kind of a conversation with you guys at the minimum to talk about things. And that would be sort of analogous to the advisory review, um, that the HARB does. And, but just to clarify, what you're proposing now is all this thing that says propose language for voluntary condition, are you proposing putting that in the code now?
No.
No, just like basically handing it to council and being like, here, when you have a conditional use application, bring this up.
Yeah.
Yeah, great. Why not? Right?
Oh, I didn't, I didn't understand.
Okay, so yeah, that's, that's the other thing.
This is a mental part of the zoning code. This is something like when, when council has a conditional use hearing. So the way a lot of communities work is if, if there's a conditional use process, the, the city, the municipalities are with a stack of standard conditions. Like you shall, you know, do, you know, and, and they go through them one by one and say like, you know, depending on the legal footing, sometimes they require them and sometimes they just politely ask for them, but the message is clear. If we're asking for it, we want you to take it seriously. Um, and that's all this is. It's never go in the code. Only one thing I'm suggesting we add to the code, which is a new, um, standard, um, condition that, um, the conditional use reflects the extent feasible of best practices in sustainable design, construction, and operation of buildings. That's it. And that, that goes along with things like the building reflects the community's character. I mean, if you look at the code, there's a whole Anadarme kind of list of things you have to do. And this is, this is how you would get at it, is, is through this, this process. Yeah, this would never be in the code. This would just be something the council pulls out its drawer and says, okay, conditional use hearing, we have this condition. What do you think about this condition?
Let's bring up the issue. Let's bring up the conversation. And there's often a lot of room for that in conditional use, depending on the applicant needs or wants. You know, they need council's approval to even go through the line development process. So, you know, council pushes on this a little bit, um, that might be, we'll get something out of it.
And some of these, like, I mean, like, I guess, like, at this point, because you're talking about construction, I think, uh, probably one of the, the bigger things that conserves all that energy is not demolishing the existing structure in reverse place, which we already have, a pretty strong policy on. So I'm just kind of like making like, we don't, right? We don't have, you know, you don't have byright demolition. Theoretically, someone could request demolition.
Only for historic buildings, though.
Right, for, for buildings prior to nineteen forty-five.
Yeah.
I mean, we can't preclude newer buildings with, with respect to creative building.
Even by law.
Well, by, I mean, by whatever we're talking about here, at least.
So, yeah, that's an important distinction. This is.
Yeah, so we, we kind of, we, we get, we're, we're getting at, I think, a lot of these things in, in a number of ways. But I mean, also it's helpful because, right, theoretically, at some point someone could come and they have a building somewhere and they can request it and if they, if they are granted a byright demolition, presumably that would be some sort of significant project. I can't see that occurring, but if it were, then you've kind of wiped out a lot of the things. Then some of these maybe make more sense to do on a more extensive basis to try to recapture some of that. I don't see that occurring. Um, but it just struck me that we've already kind of hit a lot of these things by the fact that we're gonna be adaptive, we're using structures rather than demolishing them.
But if they're not historic, I mean.
I think the key is it creates a conversation, right? So they might be doing that, but they may have ideas for more sustainable new, for the, for new building materials, for the, for those aspects of it. And they could, they could present those, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you better, I appreciate all that.
Just going to my comment. I think we probably want to say three infrastructure VMPs.
Okay. Just not any old investment management.
Because now VMPs basically means anything that's allowed for.
You should, the National Park Service has their own VMPs. For this. Okay, it's, because it's late, I think we have to people the other topic, which was to reflect on what we learned from one nineteen, um, uh, however, for, I, to put an idea in your head there, I will say, one of the reasons the conditional use, um, process is required here is two reasons. One is the language, um, for that particular strip of Windsor Avenue requires any mixed-use building or any apartment building to have conditional use. And I think our real intent was any building that was above the basic height limit it was getting. So there may be a little flaw in the code. But the other reason is because, um, we, in the five A district, we do not allow multifamily houses to have commercial uses in them. Interestingly, in the four A district, we do, by special exception. And that might be another quirk in the code. If this, if, if these houses, if, if, if this little part of five A or five A had been coded the same way four A was, they would only need a special exception to do what they want to do. And so I think that's another flaw of the code.
Is this a flaw or?
Well, because I don't think in the five A district, we anticipated, um,
we really took into account, those, those buildings, those offices have always worried me. I don't think we took them into account. Um.
A clarification, it's, uh, conditional use for the four A, it's.
Conditional for?
For the four A, um, and it relates to the age of the building and the lot size of the building.
All right, so I was about a little bit. Um, but we didn't consider it in the four A, I guess is the point. We didn't really consider it for these, these multifamily houses in the five A, which I think was an oversight at the time. And we might have thought it's okay for those houses to become mixed-use or buildings or commercial buildings because it's five A district. But now we don't allow that. We don't allow those buildings to be torn down. And so they, they, that re-conversion, conversion from a multifamily house to mixed use through demolition and reconstruction is not permitted. Therefore, the zoning code, that quirk now looms large. And, and we might want to look at, is there a, a way to, um, allow those kind of structures? Michael, you've always talked about this in the four A district too. Is there a way to allow things to be used more flexibly? Um, and then I think the third thing this points out is, um, just a lot of quirks in how non-conforming things are resolved. Um, some things are easy to resolve and other things aren't easy to resolve if they're non-conforming and probably made sense at some point, but it probably also merits another look, I think. Both Chloe and Michael have suggested to me there's probably a way to make it much easier to deal with non-conformities. My main concern is ambiguities and how everything relies on interpretation and not clear language in the code. I mean, we shouldn't be putting anyone in a position of having to rely on interpretations. We should try to have code that's clear. So if we can, and we want to have a chance to talk about that too. I think those were the things I, they wanted to bring up as potential issues for the future. Um, last thing I'll say is, um, again, um, thanks to our Chloe and Michael and Jen. I hope you all have a great holiday season. We'll be back on January third with a meeting to end all meetings, uh, when the plans for two thirty half return are brought up to the public.
Will it be held here or will it be held in the public?
We're holding that big round thing in Las Vegas. And hold twenty thousand people. Um, I'm not sure where we'll hold it. That's a good idea to have there. And then probably February, we'll have a workshop meeting with council about our priorities for the next year. So I'll be asking you to think about, of all the many topics that come up that we never got to, which ones do you think we ought to put on top of the list and then discuss that with council? So keep that in mind. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Sure. Um, is there a second? No second.
We need to get five points so we can adjourn. Second motion.
All okay, very good.
All right, thank you very much.
Good holiday.